Okay, make a motion to open.
Oh.
Second.
No, don't wait. We're not, she's not ready. She's still working her magic.
Okay, go for it.
Okay, I make a motion to open the meeting.
A second.
Well, call please. Uh, trustee Littig.
Aye.
Trustee Winthu.
Aye.
Trustee Schedser.
Aye.
Mayor Komen.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, I guess we should then just ask if anybody has any kind of conflict of interest with anything or anything to disclose. I don't know that we.
I have nothing to disclose.
I do not.
Okay. Do you want to read, read the riot act?
Really? It's not really.
I should say the open meeting compliance certification, please.
Take a deep breath and here we go.
Okay.
The public will have opportunities to comment on specific agenda items when they occur in the meeting and also on general matters at the end of the meeting. Speakers can comment once in each comment window if it is on a specific agenda item. It is not a debate, deposition, or panel discussion. Speakers must step to the front of the room as physically able. Alternatively, they may provide comments from where they are seated. If an attendee is participating via web conference technology such as Zoom, the clerk will announce how attendees should signal that they wish to come. This may differ by platform, but is typically accomplished through the raise your hand feature, which we are using Zoom tonight. If you do wish to speak, raise your hand or if you were, I asked the question to the board, put it in the Q and A. If you put it in the chat, I don't look at chats, so it will be ignored. Thank you. Speakers must give their name, address, and organization. There shall be an exemption for any category of people protected by New York state law. Speakers must be recognized by the presiding officer. Speakers must limit their remarks to three minutes on any given topic. Speakers may not yield any remaining time they may have to another speaker. Board members may, with the permission of the mayor, only interrupt a speaker during their remarks for the purpose of clarification of oral information. Speakers must observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Interested parties or their representatives may address the board by written communications to villageclerk@villageofpittsburgh.com. All written communications will become part of the public record and will be attached to the minutes for the meeting. At the center's request, written communications will be read aloud by the clerk at the meeting and will adhere to a three-minute time limit. If printed materials or other media are provided by attendees during the meeting, they must be submitted to the village board with optional distribution to audience members. All materials will be part of the public record. Private distribution of materials to audience members only is prohibited.
Thank you. You should do a mic drop after that.
I need to take a drink of water.
I know, okay. Uh, well, so the, uh, really, um, it's not a, a meeting in the sense of our regular meetings tonight. This, uh, tonight, this is a workshop, so it's a little less formal. It's a discussion amongst all of us about, um, creative, well, actually two main topics, really. The use of the ARPA funds that the village has received from the, the federal government. And then also repurposing some of our village reserves and creating clarity in terms of language for those reserves. And then additionally, uh, we are looking potentially at a local law to have still continue virtual meeting attendance in some of our board members. Because Governor Hochul has removed the executive order. So, um, there have, there's been model legislation sent out to all the municipalities in New York State to pursue this. So, uh, we thought it would merit some, some discussion to bring this, bring this up tonight. So with that being said, um, we have our first item up for discussion in the workshop and this is the, the use of our ARPA funds. And do you want to just, how much has the village received? Maybe we should just start with that, so we kind of know what's, what did we get? I know.
Well, what we got, what I would like to have gotten is one more number. We received 136,614 dollars and 96 cents.
Don't forget.
What we have available to discuss tonight, because the board has made a motion to set funds aside for the Rand Creek, 44 Rand Creek project of 1805. So we have left 118,114 dollars and 96 cents. We still have the 96 cents, so we can use that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, yeah, and just so, um, anybody listening tonight or here at the meeting, um, the way, um, it was determined, at least my understanding, and you can chime in as well, uh, it was based on population. So we're a small village, uh, so, uh, the town has almost 30,000 people and they receive, you know, over 2 million something. And so, um, this is pretty in line with what all of us villages received, because we're smaller. So, but nonetheless, we, we have some funding. So, um, why don't we?
Lisa, do you know the town? Has the town thought?
Do you want to state your name and for the record?
Do you want to go now?
Well, just.
I just, Lisa Cole, 44 South Main Street. I just wanted to know, has the town decided on any projects they're doing yet?
Yeah, they, they've already held some meetings and, um, uh, they're dispensing the funds. In fact, some of the funds are going to be used for, um, a joint project that we worked on with them for medians, um, going out of the town on State Street for traffic calming. There'll be one median, that'll be a drive over median at the, um, the line right there between the town and the village, uh, for traffic calming, for visibility to see that you're coming in or that you're in a more densely populated area. There's a second median also, um, that, uh, will be funded by the town and that will be down as you head towards, um, the post office, towards Mitchell Road. It'll be right at Wood Creek and that'll be a significant median, because that'll be a hard curved pedestrian refuge median with the ability to make, uh, have a left-hand turn lane to go into Wood Creek as you exit the village. And it will also, as a pedestrian refuge, be able to allow people to cross, take a breath, stand in that median if traffic's too much on the other side of the road, and then hook up with town trails on the woodland side. So, yeah, so there's two medians, um, and that's part of what was in the, um, active transportation plan that we jointly adopted. So, we know they're using some funds for that as well.
And pickleball courts, right?
Yeah, right? There's, there's, you know, different, I don't know that they've dispersed all the funds yet, but I know they've, they've done, put together a number of projects.
Can you, may I clarify, ask for clarification for one of the statements that you made? And that is about the median and the combined, um, efforts of the town and village. How much of our ARPA funds have we committed to that?
None.
And none?
None. That the, you know, you were asked about the town projects and, you know, just projects going on. The payment, the payment from the town, I believe, is going to be derived completely from their ARPA funds. Yeah, so we're happy about that. Yeah.
What is this ARPA, too?
Uh, yeah, I believe, I believe that's, that's what they decided on, you know, um, you know, I, I don't have it confirmed, but that was the last conversation.
I do know about the pickleball courts for sure.
Yeah, the pickleball courts are happening.
Where is that?
Yeah, what are they?
I have a green bankman, I believe.
Oh, just in the one location? I thought they were looking at a couple.
There might be, I didn't research it.
And that was due to the input, they had some sessions.
Yeah. Yeah. Because it's a chunk. Yeah. So, um, we can start in, I guess. Have we received anything, Doithia, from residents?
I have passed on to the board all the comments received from the public. Um, they were in the packet. I also just passed you a late edition, I mailed it out. It didn't make the packet because it was.
It just came in?
It just came in, so.
So do we need to state those for the record or that we enter them into the record?
I mean, I'm happy to do that. Really, how the board wants to perceive, I can.
Well, has everybody had a chance to take a look at them as well? Okay, I mean, I think we all have, yes.
I would like to add, there were a few comments, um, that were received through social media also. Cause I had posted that we were doing this meeting this evening and so some people commented and there, um, I didn't, I didn't print them out, but I'm happy to write them out for the record, um, so that the board may have them. They mostly, um, touched on, um, gift cards was one of the suggestions for teachers and preschools and businesses. And, uh, I, I think it would be a good thing to explain to the public that, um, such gifts would not, would not be legal.
No.
That we cannot give to private entities or private businesses with, um, village funds.
Yes.
So, so that people understand that, maybe we could.
Maybe it helps if I go over latest information. I included a bunch of different things I received at NICOM since I wasn't at NICOM last week. I did send into an ARPA class and other grants that are out there. It was very interesting that we need to pursue and look at. But looking at ARPA, the least determination most current is each municipality is receiving a 10 million.
Sort of a cap?
Yeah, deduction for lost revenue. Okay, that doesn't mean the head town million lost revenue, but we can just, up to. We can just claim automatically, not do any math and go crazy about it because of the complicated formula they enrolled initially. They're allowing us to say.
So goodness is paying, yeah, that's a benefit also, but not through these particular ARPA funds.
They have other resources.
Other resources, okay.
So the good news for us is the whole 136,000 can be used for any municipal use within certain limits. I mean, there's very mild limits, but if it's a normal municipal purpose, we can use it, so.
Yeah, and.
That opens the territory a little bit.
It does, and, and, um, just so people understand, when, when the funds were first released, were a lot of constraints on it and it was kind of arcane and different forms and it could, you know, we're never quite sure. So, um, I think this was really in response from municipalities saying, we don't know where to go with this. Can we do an AV system or not, or can we do this or not? You know, it, it really became pretty convoluted, so, I mean, it's great, they responded.
Right, and in the same light, as you were saying, they said stormwater, uh, yet doing roadwork wasn't.
Couldn't do it.
Was that, huh?
Yeah.
Really? And it's really been a push to do infrastructure. They really are looking for municipalities to step up. They really want to see a lot of infrastructure and hate to say it, like, not the pretty, necessarily pretty things done, but the underground, the roads, the things that need to be done, the hard one-time expenses villages might have that need to be done so that they can get those done. So that really was, seems to be the push that they were making.
I'm not with them there.
Huh?
I'm not with them there. Just like when I was just, we need new roof and I'm like, no, I, no. I want something I can see and enjoy.
I am, I understand.
Half of it should be aesthetic.
I understand.
We appreciate.
I'd like to think that's where we see so many projects from the DOT right now, because they're using the ARPA funds.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah.
Happy to contribute, but, but, that being said, may I say my idea?
Of course, thank you.
We'll start with Lily.
Sure.
Thank you. I've been thinking about this for so long. In the village, we have had, uh, in the past, a tree program. And, uh, the trees are, um, inventoried and they're, they are, there's a list of, that are some that needed to be removed because of disease and other, uh, um, reasons. So going forward, I would love to see, this is such an opportunity, to have this, um, unencumbered amount of money to save just for a really, um, wonderful project for the village to happen all at one time instead of a piecemeal. So it makes an impact, uh, all at one time to, and I use this figure, uh, to plant 200 trees in the village of Pittsburgh. I, I gave to the trustees a list of, um, benefits of, um, which you're not lost on them, I know, because we've talked about this many times. The benefits of adding trees to our streetscape, not only for health benefits, but also safety. And I just think the impact would be great to have it happen all at one time. Um, the planting cost and ongoing upkeep for trees is about, and I know Zach will have a better figure on this, about $500 a tree. That includes the tree itself and the planting and, and a year or two of upkeep. I'm basing them on figures I got off the internet. So that being said, I'm hoping for that we can take at least half of those funds and use them. It's not only aesthetic, it's also to do with the health of the community, safety of the community, and also helps businesses in that it attracts businesses to our village and attracts residents to our village as well. So that's my pitch.
I am pro-tree with you. Um, yeah, and we still have the tree program, actually.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, so, you know, maybe you can talk, just fill us in a little bit, you know, because you're bringing up a really interesting idea. And how many trees do we currently have in our inventory?
Uh, between 1200 and 1500 trees.
Okay, and then, um, because I included, just as general information about the brachypereas, because we have, you know, that's a thing. And I'll, you can speak to that as well. So, out of, like, okay, it's a lot of trees, so out of that number of trees, how many are invasives roughly? Couple hundred, maybe?
Couple hundred, yeah.
You know, between brachypereas, maybe the Norway maples, those, okay. Because I, I mean, I, I'm interested in the idea, but I would love to, and, and also, as you know, we've directed Jeff to set up the tree committee. We're going to get a certified arborist. We're going to enact legislation to preserve our larger canopy trees as well. And Jeff is working on it, he's going to be here in about 15 minutes, he may want to add to that. I like combining that somehow in some fashion with, um, if we're going to plant a tree, let's remove an invasive tree. Let's take that tree out, you know?
Yeah, so the trees, this, pretty trees, we'd have to find lots of spots for them and that's one way.
Oh, so we roughly take out an invasive and put in something that's a, a sustainable tree, a native tree or, or, okay.
The only downside I see to that is that we lost a lot of trees, um, this last season due to all the work, the DOT work, the RGNE, um, work. If we could, um, weed as many mature trees as we could and sort of weave the new ones in. I know we've been waiting to have the funds to do, um, something more aggressive and this is a great idea, particularly the street trees.
I would recommend, uh, certified arborists coming through and picking, tree picking, trees.
Really tagging, identifying.
And tree, tree sites should do that.
Yeah.
There's no sense in putting new trees and bonds that are, you know, a lot of the flourish, so. Picking the right spot.
Yeah, just.
I'm just wondering if, along with looking at some of the invasive trees, I know that we've got an ongoing program to treat many of the ash trees that we wish to keep. It might make sense to kind of cut our losses on some of those and, and replace some.
We were just talking about that, good one, yeah.
And then we're essentially, you know, almost breaking even on the expenditure to do this. It's more good for the.
Yeah, it's, uh, right around, excuse me, uh, 28 ash trees that we have right now. They get treated on every other year, um, term and it's right around $2,000 per year to treat about 14 trees, so, yeah, that's kind of.
And, and some of them are having dieback, we were talking about that.
Yeah, they're dying back and they're very large and expensive trees.
Big tree to take down.
Not a bad use of funds.
Yeah, so maybe we can kind of get a few moving parts in this, you know, if we're really looking, looking at, at something like this as well. Um, you know, and also just getting back to what, um, our attorney's working on, we also, um, were discussing and have discussed in previous meetings, the, um, the brow program, beyond right of way. And this has been, um, utilized in municipalities in other parts of the state. And it's not so, they've recognized that when all the trees were hacked down by the power lines, um, to just simply plant another tree under the power line and then it grows into the power line. You know, sort of a wash, rinse, repeat cycle there. Um, so what these municipalities have done, and quite successfully, um, they have, um, worked with residents and, and, and just in identifying certain sites where instead of planting the tree between the sidewalk and the street, in some instances, planting it on the other side of the sidewalk. So, you know, the resident gets a, gets a native tree, they get a tree in their yard, it's planted for them, it's tended to for the first year, um, and then they have a tree. And it also starts to shade over the sidewalk and create canopy. It's not right up against the street, so it doesn't have really quite the same, uh, traffic calming in that way, but mixed in where you, you clearly, you know, need to have a tree, but you don't want it to grow up on the power lines is maybe a partial option. You know, one more, one more consideration.
Yeah, absolutely, especially in, uh, the tighter side streets.
Yeah. Yeah, some of the, some of the soils are super narrow and the trees just really struggle, you know, it's not, not.
So, um, additionally, we received an email from Sue Julian and she would like the board to consider a portion of the funds to pay for the removal of the invasive. Is it alliantis?
Alliantis, yeah, tree of heaven, yes.
And it's not about. The arboretum and elsewhere throughout the village.
Yeah.
So it's similar to what we're discussing. Um, she'd also like to see more pollinator gardens added to the village state.
Yeah, we have some plans for that that we're going to be talking about, yeah.
Are those, I know I did a walkthrough of the arboretum and know where they are in the arboretum, but where are those alliantis trees? Are they everywhere?
All over.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm not a tree.
There's a few kinds of trees in this, this area.
Okay.
Kind of skirts the metal area at this point, between, uh, our shop or road and the metal. They're pushing back and they're right now, some on the other side, uh, rainforest towards swampy areas, um, ordering a town's park.
And they spread underground by rhizomes, so they keep popping up, you know, and it's, and eradicating them is not just a simple, let's cut them down, because what it does, it energizes the rhizome and splits it and you cut down one, one of those trees, you get four more.
So is that something that we would have to, like, do, uh, decide, given that we don't have a ton of funds here? 18, what's the?
118.
118, um, for, um, for removing the invasives, would we target a specific area for this funding if we were, um, kind of suggested as part of the ARPA?
I think we'd really have to work with a specialist, because it's a big deal to eradicate alliantis. It's, it, and, you know, there's, um, an organization that, um, I, you know, uh, sort of tapped into, it's called PRISM, Partnership for Regional Invasive Species Management. And they work in concert with DAK, they're out of Hobart William Smith, uh, the Seneca Zoo Society who came in and, you know, did the cataloging and did, did some of the work early days. And they also, um, can help us get grants for invasive removal, because there's some money out there right now, because it's such a huge topic.
Yeah.
We would need a professional, I think, to come there and really help us.
Um, if possible, maybe you look, look at the, not the, that's very good, too.
Yeah, those were identified, I think, in the top two, for, you know, by the Seneca Zoo Society, yeah.
Which we have a lot of both.
Everywhere, yeah, yeah, so, so that's another consideration, yeah.
I think we also received an email from, I'm doing this from memory, from June Barrett Reeves, regarding the arboretum and a request to earmark 60,000?
Yes.
Dollars in our ARPA funds for the arboretum, but no specific program was, was suggested, just to set it aside for future improvements to the arboretum. And then another one from Fran Kramer.
Yeah.
Uh, also, she, she mentioned improvement of our streetscape by sidewalks, benches, and, um.
She mentioned trees, too.
Yeah, trees, trees also, so.
Would it make sense, just to summarize, uh, since we started, some of the rest of the comments that we got, too?
Sure.
I appreciate.
I think you just did.
I was going to thank Lily.
And they are in the public package, I.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but the most recent one.
Yeah, the only one we missed was.
Just Peter Butt's.
Yeah, oh, and Peter Butt's one, he wanted to have Adirondack chairs.
Yes, that one is.
Yeah, along the canal, yeah. And Zach, you had some concerns about that.
It seems like it's not folded down, um, or sometimes you can get it down to, you know.
Yeah, an invitation. You'll see all the ducks sitting on the Adirondack chairs.
Let's see if we can put the chairs in the canal, see how they look.
Yeah, so there's that.
Well, they do look great in the new, um, space, the Collins Pavilion, so.
I know, I know, and people use them, you know, it's a nice thing.
Yeah, um, if we could find a good spot for them, I mean, exactly what consideration.
We have to decide if that's the, you know, what the community envisions, or if it would be benches or more than speed. I think with our last meeting, um, Lily brought up the cheaper version of the bench without the backs. And I think we decided having benches with arms and backs is better. I love Adirondack chairs, but also some of these other considerations that might be.
I got some feedback about benches as well. And, um, there were three residents I was just speaking with and they just said, you know, we would like to have an actual bench with no back, because, um, some people are not as able, you know, just getting up and down from a bench and just to have the support when they sit or the arm to get up, you know, so they mentioned that, you know.
So I've got so many ideas, can I say?
Are we, are we good? We're good, we're good, yeah.
All right, so some of these have not been thought of. I'm Lisa Cole, we're on 44 South Main Street. Um, you know, my mind starts floating away on me and I'm like, okay, could we, when is this in the village, exactly what we want? So, I have to say, the COVID impacted in my personal life and I think what I've seen throughout the world, really disintegrated a lot, right? We were forced to be separated from one another, you know, distancing and not speaking in person and it just kind of separated a lot of us. So, I'm looking at these COVID pandemic or COVID funds to kind of bring us back together as a community and do something that we can enjoy together so that we can come back as one. Um, so there's a couple ideas that I have. I'm gonna do the first couple ones that I'm not, I am passionate about, but I want to throw it out there, because it might be a great idea. First of all, I really would stand to see the, um, the departure of the farmer's market. I was one of the original people way back when the Friends of Pittsburgh Village started to have a farmer's market with Lisa and we were sitting at the library parking lot, it was an amazing, um, space and it was amazing event. It was Thursday night, it was very well attended and it really brought a lot of our community together. I have a T-shirt that says farmer's market, I have a little apron, I mean, we were, it was just a beautiful thing. And, you know, it moved and I had been talking to the people over there and I just think it was the wrong place, the wrong time and I would love to see us be able to invest some funds to really get that off the ground again. Because I think that we have a lot of people that'd be willing to maybe man that as a volunteer organization, so that's, that's one.
And where would the location be?
I would love to see it back where it was.
You know, the town is already putting together a plan to turn that in, completely into a park.
So could that work?
So, I mean, but, you know, in other words.
I mean, you know, we were getting people coming over from where it was a Thursday night.
Oh, yeah, it was a thing.
I mean, it was such a great thing, I just, I was so talked away and, you know, people are busy on Saturdays and, you know, the village kind of dies on the weekend. People kind of go out to the lake, so, you know, that's a whole thing in itself, but that's.
Yeah, we were Thursdays.
Yeah, we were Thursdays. We were Thursday, we'd be there for work five to nine and.
And we'd have little special events.
Yeah, it was amazing, it was amazing. So I would like to see something there. Um, I love the tree idea, I'm always for trees. So let's talk about, Lily was talking about, like, she agrees with infrastructure, but she wants pretty, right? So here's an infrastructure pretty idea. So back in 2017, July, I put together a volunteer committee at the library and presented an idea that I've heard about, a Victorian fountain that used to be in front of the Phoenix Building. Um, it was erected late 1800s and it was taken down 1920s-ish.
Yes, the Temperance Fountain.
Exactly, it was, it was the Women's Christian Temperance Union Fountain. Um, we were one of many small communities that were blessed with that fountain and it was removed, um, obviously. So I had dreams of getting this fountain back and putting it and erected pretty much around where it was before. Apparently, and I haven't had a chance to look into it quite a lot, but I worked all over the DPDW to see where the village land is on that property in Phoenix Building. I know that we've got strip of land there that's actual ours. So there's, there may even be water lines underneath there, I don't know what's under there, but I would love to see a community, little community space, little park, maybe like a little round section with, with an actual Victorian water fountain. Um, you know, we've, we've really moved away from public water fountains over the years. Now we're using plastic water bottles, which aren't good for the community, right? So, uh, we have lots of people running and walking and little kids and, and kids that congregate at their speeds. Or, uh, not the children, what they would like to, hungry, who would like to have a little drink. But I just think it would be a wonderful little space and then again, it would be traffic calming, because then you've got people that are congregating right there in that four corners where people want to fly through. So, it's a big project, I never really went into the whole budget piece of it, um, but it's, it's an amazing project and we would truly, um, a blessed community if we can bring that, that fountain back. Um, I have a whole PowerPoint presentation, I just want to show you guys. If, if you don't know, this is where it stood, there's the fountain.
Yeah.
Um, this is adorable picture of two residents with the fountain. This is a example of the completed fountain, what, what it kind of looked like. Um, this is the kind of where the location is, somewhere around there or here, if you guys can see that.
It actually, yeah, some of it was in the street at one point.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure where.
Horses were watered with the fountain.
Yes, yeah, so it, it was really erected because, and this is an interesting thing, this is during the women's suffrage time and I thought, you know, with our first female mayor, that might be appropriate. But, um, it's where, you know, wives try to prevent their husbands to go into the saloon and get drinks. So they thought if they put a water fountain out there, they might drink water instead of alcohol.
It's the temperance, right?
Yes, so, I mean, it's, it has some great history, we're a historic village, I think that we have, I mean, there's no better place to put it than, I think, in our village.
Thank you for that, and then my understanding is that, um, the base to the fountain is in Mike Newcomb's, the basement of the Phoenix Building.
And I did go to see it.
Right, you see, maybe portions of it, and then there's another fountain that exists, I think, in Texas, that's actually intact, because there were several of these.
Yes, there's a couple in New York State, too, actually.
There's some more in New York State and I know there's some in Ohio, I think, too, maybe.
Yes, Ohio, yes, Ohio was first.
Right, that's right, yeah, now I'm remembering this.
Yeah, and, you know, we, we would have to, you know, a commission of, of an iron man to do, an iron man, an iron person to make and cast a new fountain, but I just think it would be an amazing addition, so.
Thank you.
That's my passion, honestly, so thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, it is, it is a unique part of our history and it tells the story.
Yeah.
You know, and can tie things in, um, and maybe, hi Jeff.
Hello.
Welcome. Um, we're talking about what used, where the fountain used to be years ago in front of the Phoenix Building.
I don't remember that.
No, you wouldn't.
That's a good one, I remember.
And if you remember that, wow, you're looking pretty good.
Exactly.
I'm probably not looking pretty good even.
It was kind of there, kind of see, this is the fountain.
Oh, yeah, cool.
Phoenix Building.
And, and we were always thinking of that area anyway as a type of pocket park and actually I was going to try to meet with the owner of the Phoenix Building. Right, it was in the comp plan, um, to see if they would take the bollards down and maybe do some more traditional landscaping that would be appropriate for the Phoenix Building in addition, you know, all of that. But we do have the menorah that goes up there and the Christmas tree that goes up there, too, so we factor all that stuff in.
Right. Right.
However, I don't know if we actually own that land. Remember, that came up with now the work of the four corners and the Christmas tree, right?
Right.
And, you know, Mike Newcombe allows us to use the electricity and put up the tree and, you know, the menorah.
It came as a shock to many of us.
Yeah.
It had a feeling for many years that that belonged to the village.
And so there was some question.
Yeah.
It had to be looked into. I believe that that's why we left it.
I thought it's right there.
Yeah, I thought he did, too, and we don't own it.
Somebody gave me, I don't know.
We can revisit it.
2017, but somebody gave me this little.
Yeah.
You know what, I'm not sure we looked at that issue.
Well, why don't we revisit that? We should do it anyway, you know, it's a cool thing.
I wanted to do it for our 230th birthday anniversary, which was in June 2020. I'm glad we asked.
Well, we can do another birthday. The birthdays keep coming, as we all know.
I've done it for something because of the tree or the electricity.
There was something.
Why is this sounding familiar? We did, does this ring a bell with you, putting up the tree, maybe?
I think it was, we're looking to put power in.
Oh, power, yeah.
A while back, we were looking to establish an electric meter and power there to be able to power up the tree.
The tree, okay.
Wait, so you're thinking that we own this tree right here?
I'm thinking, I was told.
Little strip, I have a chair.
I was always told that if you looked down Main, you go, you know, like Village Bakeries down there, that, that the land sort of angled in and then ended at the corner of where ESL's brick building is. You know, in other words, and then that was, from then on, it was.
Oh, that part, though?
Yeah, but potentially. I don't know, though. We really, we need to research this.
Do you know where you got this, Lisa, in terms of?
Oh, gosh. It's 2017.
What?
It was done in 2017. I brought this project to the village, and we have a big community.
I'm just trying to read the library page. That will for sure tell us what's going on.
We can also get with Sky, you know.
Does that say? Does that say 1527? Can you read the library page?
Page 318.
Okay, what's the library? The library?
Library, oh, 1527 of Deeds, page 318.
Perfect.
1527.
Oh, there we go.
I don't know, let's do a monitor.
We just need a better rise.
Yeah.
What'd you say, 315?
Yeah, hang on, that's.
That is 318.
So I guess according to this line correctly.
You are absolutely correct.
I mean, because either way, we should be looking into this, I think, no matter what.
But it seems to me that right away should be plenty wide enough for them to have to do that.
That's part of reclaiming that space.
Yeah, yeah, it's in the comp plan to be a pocket park. Pardon me?
You have access to the?
Can you read that?
I'm sorry, two conversations were.
Is it okay? Can I just give you happy?
Of course. I wrote on it.
Now we can all read it. Now we can all read it.
I thought about that.
You know. Yeah, that's great.
Do you have access to the Neurophonic Clerk's Office, Jessica?
Yes. I can't remember my password, but I'm sure I can.
Don't worry about it. I was, never mind.
I know I have access.
Either way, we can follow up on this.
I'll, I'll do it.
Because this could be maybe a nice joint project for the owner of the building, you know, for doing landscaping this historic for the building.
How does it make a town of one of us?
Hey, I'll ask insight.
You could town it by another town.
Shameless. Yeah, that's right. And they get to look at it from town hall. There we go. Well, thanks. Nice, all nice ideas. Really, really appreciate that.
Well, so I have some, are we moving, are we taking more ideas?
Yes, of course. This is why we have a workshop.
I have some practical ones.
Okay.
And some beautification ones. The street trees are a top priority, so we already covered that, particularly the ones that we've lost that are traffic coming. You know, haven't. Benches, I think that's a perfect use of these funds. We've been talking about not having enough money for some of the benches that we wanted to put some places people love to sit. The, one of the big things from our comp plan was the public restroom. And I don't know, that would probably take, you know, we've talked about Port of Pittsburgh Park, combining it with some showers, but like, we don't have the porta potty. It's just not, like, let's be one of the few places in the US that gives people an appropriate place to go to the bathroom. I would love to see that. That was discussed in our comp plan. I'm not saying that, I would like to see it on the list. I know they're very expensive, so that would probably be something we'd have to use ARPA funds to then use to get grant funding, and I, I don't know.
And we don't, we don't have that much land, say, for example, on Chain Place, you know, so we would have to, and, and Canal Corporation's been very receptive with ideas that we have, but we would have to, you know, reach out in a different way because we, we don't even have, I don't think, enough land down there to, to put a restroom that we own.
Not really.
Not that we own, yeah.
The thing that I did want to bring up at the meeting earlier with the drop, was on the east end of the parking lot,
Yeah.
the plot of the land that's sitting there.
Yeah.
And it could also work to, to straighten out the approach going from the Canal Trail to Chain Place, just putting in a facility there.
The parking lot that you're, you're talking, talking about, just so people know, is across from Via Girasole. Okay, it's that little parking lot.
Yeah.
So, just so people are oriented listening, yeah. Yeah. No, we were in a meeting earlier today with Canal Corp, so.
Yeah, so that was just a thought because it's one of the wider areas that we would have down there to give the counties something.
And of course, we'd have to talk about the maintenance if we did put in the cleaning and all of the costs that go into that. But these, you know, that would be a quality of life issue. That would be huge. And we've been talking about it for a long time. One of the things that we brought up during COVID, or during the shutdown, was just this whole idea of a sense of place and how much people enjoy being outside year round. And we talked about lighting up more than just the, you know, holiday lights. But we talked about lighting the trees on Chain Place during, like, throughout the winter, just to give us a lovely place to walk and to sit in the evening. And I know we didn't have the funds to take some electric work and things like that. So I'd like to see that added to the list because it would change how we use our, our village in winter, being outside. And my last idea is, do we have enough money for the 25 mile per hour speed limit signs? Did we put that in the budget, or is that something that's like a low cost thing, but we could absolutely use our?
So there are only a few rows that actually are closed now.
Yeah, I know.
So.
I think we can do it, yeah, okay.
If you just replace the those, the ones that currently exist, no problem.
And we talked about seeing if we could do some gateway signs that would be allowed, like village-wide speed limit, and even though it's technically on a, you know, one of the arterial roads, maybe.
Village streets.
Yeah, village streets, and that way it communicates. And those are expensive, and we have to coordinate with NICE dots.
Yeah, tomorrow, that could be one of the discussion points we're having.
I know, I was thinking of that, too.
I mean, you've got to be aware of legislation at this point.
Yeah. We're meeting with the, with the NICE dot project engineer tomorrow to kind of get an update on where it's all at and, you know, some issues maybe that have come up. So this will be put on that agenda, too.
And I'm sure this community's gonna move, you know, that's.
Okay, yeah. So I get that. Okay, great.
You're good?
I've got, I've got pedestrian, like what we did at Chain Place, we could do that at Maple, we talked about.
Yeah.
Where the four-way stop.
The full intersection.
Sutherland, yeah.
The light thing?
No, the rapid flashing beacons. No, those, they are, you don't want to put them in every.
Right, because then they're going to do.
They become accustomed.
So this was, although I would love to have as many as possible, yeah, painting the intersections, you know, coordinating with the art students at Sutherland, giving a stipend to have someone coordinate and make that a community project. We've talked about that a lot. It does take a lot of coordination, a lot of money, but this is a, you know, this is a perfect.
And these would be on our streets, yeah, because NICE dot, as soon as you say you want to paint an intersection, they go crazy.
Those are ideas. Yeah, our streets, we can, yeah, that's why I thought.
Can I just maybe come and go back to the bathroom thing?
Yeah.
I mean, you're right, we, we have some nice bathrooms. I don't know if we really have to do the shower thing, but I'd do a great.
Yeah, that was in the comp plan. I don't know if we can shower in there.
But the thought of putting that in that space you were talking about, like, right in that space, you know, bathroom facility, like, right there in the canal, just makes me cringe. What I'm thinking, and I, again, I don't know, we're just, just at this, and I don't know if this is private of the old gas station, that little building that's sitting right there. I don't know if this is privately owned.
It's privately owned, yeah.
Little bathroom in that, in that building.
Well, and also to have to meet ADA compliance, you know, there's things that have to be addressed.
We would still use the carcass of that building. Big brand new bathroom. Oh, good. Those are the big brand new bathroom. You know, like, tucked in that cute little space there.
No, no, thanks, thanks. Good idea, definitely.
Better than porta potty.
Anything is better. I know, anything is better, definitely. Okay, so. David Marshall would like to be recognized.
Oh, I see you here, hi.
Is it necessary to go up? No, Dave Marshall, 67 South Main. So I like the public restroom idea, just to throw a quick comment out there. In reviewing the site plan for 75 Monroe, they had presented a, and included in the site plan, a public restroom. And it was part of the LWRP review process to move that forward to approval or consistency determination. And with regards to the old barns down in Chain Place, and if redevelopment may occur, it may be an opportunity to engage in additional public amenities as part of the LWRP review process. As we go through those discussions and, you know, balancing the goals of the LWRP, it may be possible similar with the 75 Monroe development, where a public restroom may be integrated in with new development rather than be a standalone, a separate entity embedded, you know, taking over a parking space. So just a thought, just to have meaningful discussions with development.
Nice, yeah.
Just two other quick ones. One of those, you know, right now, the only place I see lots of kids playing on playgrounds is up at the town rec. And I know, again, there's, you know, Chain Place is all private space and across that car from the park. There's really, we split it out on a playground, and, you know, maybe you mentioned the idea of a linear park across the top. I don't know what the goal of that, you know, the upper parking lot there is for the town. But if that may include, you know, a playground for families with small kids to be closer to, you know, the canal. Or possibly, again, discussions with private landowners about maybe a long-term lease where the village might be able to install a playground on the Chain Place side, or, you know, currently the opposite side of the canal, and install a playground that's maintained by the village, but embedded on maybe like a long-term carve-out lease with a private landlord. Something like that might work out as an idea. And then two other just quick ideas. One would be, yeah, I absolutely love seeing people do art down on Chain Place, painting either the old buildings and just, you know, canal or the opposite views. Is there any way we could offer like public storage for art supplies or a place where, you know, people might be able to keep some things to do that more often, so that we see it a lot? Like, it's kind of a great idea, but. And then the last one I really like, which is, you know, COVID's affected a lot of us, but particularly less affluent. There are many less affluent families that really reach in the budgets to come to the village of Pittsburgh. And it puts stress on those budgets. And many of them don't even know that when they go to replace windows, for example, that they're held to a higher standard. And it's hard for them sometimes to reach out into their day-to-day budgets and get done the things that are very meaningful, whether or not it's for energy efficiency or just to keep up with code. So one of the ideas might be, and I've seen some examples of this, you know, across the country, which is using ARPA funds to support a nonprofit management of a historic preservation grant program, specifically to help less affluent members of the community who have a hard time keeping up with the historical preservation objectives and goals and codes that are currently in place. It has to be looked at from a legal perspective and reviewed, but it is possibly a way to provide some assistance on things that are incredibly important to all of us to maintain full time.
Thank you. Really, that thoughtful input. I do, I don't know if you, the Chair of the HPB, Jeff Pollak, he sits on the Board of the Landmark Society, and they have been, they've received grant funding to put together a program for historic, this instance, I think they're really focusing on windows because it's such a, we all know. And so to train people and then expand that, and potentially part of that could be outreach also to, you know, not just our community, I mean, they're looking at the region really as well.
If within the village, ARPA funds have a dedicated resource of maybe matching funds or some way to pay that cost or that burden, it might be just something to take into.
Yeah, yeah, great ideas, all of them. Thank you very much. Great. Bobby, had your hand up, yeah.
Yes, I'd love to speak, I would. Couple things. Regarding the restrooms, we did investigate the financial burden of the restrooms, which is one of the reasons why that project has been deferred. We went over and looked at what they had in careport and talked to them about the maintenance that's required. They have showers also in addition to restrooms, but in addition to regular cleaning, if you want a usable facility, you have to have somebody, obviously, that would close in at night and the hours. So there's, it's, it's a big commitment if you decide to do that. The other suggestion that I would, if you haven't already done so, is I would suggest you talk to Will Smith, because the town's plan for re-erecting a barn in the Erie Canal Nature Reserve included restrooms that would be right next to the trail. And that might be providing service with a much less burden for the village. The other thing I wanted to request tonight is some funding for the arboretum. It's the village, village's largest apartment that would benefit from the shopping mall at its beginning. We've done, as a member of the Friends, we've done quite a bit of investigation about what the highest priorities might be to get the project on the right track. Probably priority number one would be a larger scale removal of the Atlantis trees on the proper. We talked to a couple of arborists to get an estimate of how much that would be. The estimates range between $8,000 and $12,000. There's two stands of Atlantis, one orders the wetland on the east, western boundary of.
We, we covered this, yeah. We're good, yeah, no.
And the other one is.
It's helpful, yeah.
And the roof, okay, okay. The other point I'd like to make is that removing Atlantis at this time is critically important because as we all know, the Asian lantern fly, it will be in our region probably next season. And the Atlantis is their primary food in China. And by removing a food source for actually helping the environment and hopefully mitigating that problem as it comes. The other thing I would recommend is using some money of the ARPA funds for devising a master plan for the project. And I don't think we have to do an inventory, as a master plan always does, because we've already done that research. We know what's there. We know what the basis of the project is. But I think advancing some of the concepts that have already been discussed in the arboretum and, and also creating a management plan, so as administration changes in the future, the DPW and the public officials have the roadmap of what to do annually to manage and prevent water gases from attacking the arboretum and continue to cultivate the native ecosystem as was in the Woods and Aldis. I think this is a perfect opportunity for it. If you read the language in the ARPA funding, it specifically targets health and psychological, mental health issues that had been raised by the COVID crisis. Access to natural open spaces is exactly what the arboretum provides. And I think it's a very appropriate target for funding, so thank you.
Thank you. All good ideas. Thanks so much. Any, yeah, Justin?
Yeah, sure. Maybe this is a good time. Really, everyone else has come up with a lot of great ideas. I fully appreciate everyone's contribution. Personally, I also feel strongly that the arboretum is something that fits in well with the purpose of the ARPA funds. And we have the space dedicated, and it could really benefit from an infusion in terms of planning and initial work. And that could take place of, that can involve things like invasive mitigation, planning, and also some initial work and establishment of trails or something to that effect. I think that would be really great to see. I guess, as I was skimming along some of the ARPA fund materials, the, the only thing that I would like to try to stay away from is projects that really relate more to, to maintenance, that, that could be understood in terms of ongoing maintenance costs of the, of the village. And I'd like to make sure from a financial perspective that. And I'd like to make sure from a financial perspective that as we have one-shot revenue, we don't use those to become dependent on them, when that should really be something that comes from taxes eventually. But I do think that some of these one-off projects that benefit the whole community are really well-aligned with the purpose of the funding.
Great, any other, okay. Okay, you know, I think they're all great ideas, I really do. And I think, you know, one of the things that I'd like to look at is somehow combining whatever we do come up with, with the ability to source grant funding, to kind of keep moving things forward, regardless of what we have from ARPA. So I'd like to see some of the funding go towards a grant writer. We have a little bit right now in the budget, but I don't think it's enough for us to really start tackling some of these things. And I think, you know, the best way, you know, make some of these improvements is to get somebody who knows how to do the work and source those grants and follow up on those grants. There is so much money out there right now, in addition to the ARPA funding, and Dorothy, you could probably speak to that, you sat in, you know, in NICOM, I know you sat in on that class as well. There is just a lot right now, and it's not going to be there forever, so I would like to see some, a piece of it, you know, whether it's another 20,000 that we put in or 15,000, whatever it is. I think that will serve our village to move a lot of these projects forward regardless of what we end up with with using the ARPA funds. I just think it's, as a practical matter, if we're spending, you know, $10,000 on a grant writer for some grants, and we get a $150,000 grant, we're doing pretty well. I think that's a good investment for our village. So I'd like, you know, us to consider that as well, because I think, I get the one-offs and I get, you know, that it's visible in our village, but I think it would be prudent for us to set aside something, so we make sure we're doing the best we can. It's got to be more than just the ARPA funds, that's, to me, that's a start almost, you know, it's like money over the transom, you know, but there's a lot that, you know, is going on. I did meet with Zach and Dorothea as well, and I just think we need to give context for everything. And I think, again, all the ideas are great, but I think it's important that, you know, Zach, you can speak to some of the deferred projects, Dorothea, you can too, regardless of, you know, that it's not necessarily just maintenance, but there's a lot of other moving parts to our village. So I think just to round out the picture for everybody, I think that'd be a good way to go, you know.
Me and Zach made our wish list. And I think we spent.
Oh, this, uh, server. You know, I already did.
You did, okay.
Not for me, I need a call.
Zach, can you go make it?
I can send it to everyone right now.
Thank you.
And give me a minute and I can shut up.
Yeah, you can put it on the screen, okay.
I think me and Zach spent it all 10 times over.
Yeah, let's just take a minute, they're getting copies and get it set up on the screen, okay.
Just wanted to say, thanks everybody.
Oh, thanks so much, Dave.
Also, I just totally reiterate the three ideas and, uh, over here.
Okay, thank you, have a good evening.
I'd like to point out to the board, we don't have to spend this all tomorrow, we do have to 2024. If we had $2 million, that might take us that long.
I don't know.
I don't know, because like I said, me and Zach probably could spend a million really quick.
Well, this is good, it means we can take things under consideration and really, a little more deliberate, yeah.
And actually, you don't even have to have them spent until 2025, you don't have, you'd have to have them earmarked.
Yeah, committed, yeah. Thanks so much, thanks.
I'm not sure.
Sure.
I know, we're kind of like the bummer dude.
Well, no, but I mean, I think it just rounds out the, there's needs and, you know, all kinds of things, so.
This is the stuff that.
It's been hard.
As, you know, my role as villagers, this is the stuff that I see that we need. A lot of the times when I pitch this stuff to the board, during my season, it's not always considered where it is, it's deferred. And it's just not doable at this time, so now that I see that we have a little bit of money to spend, I can pitch it to the board and all of that, you know.
I think your quote is the canvas kicked down the road.
Yes, the canvas kicked down the road. So, the first thing that I put on here was the bathroom and shower facilities at the shop. Currently, and you'll see on the picture.
If you scroll to the last page.
That is Sean that looks like he's eating the toilet because he's sitting so close to the break table. Now, this is what we have to deal with on a daily basis, you know, we sit down and we do a bunch, so we tell them to use the bathroom, it's right at the base. It's not, it's kind of dehumanizing, so.
And it's men and women using a single toilet as a bathroom.
Yes.
Right.
So, you know, this is something that I've been working towards, one of our main goals when I took this position, is to get us a better facility, this being started. We don't have a shower, we do store work, it's filthy work, we don't have a ways to always clean up, we second place our shower in place of a washer and dryer, so we clean our clothes.
And then where do you change, if you're working on the sewer?
Usually find a dark place, somewhere in the shop next to a truck to change our clothes.
In one of the bays?
In one of the bays, yeah.
To change your clothes, okay, and then if I, there's no, is there, there's no sink where the toilet is then? So you have to wash your hands in the kitchen sink where food is?
The toilet and walk towards the kitchen and use the kitchen sink to wash your hands.
Okay.
So it's just, it's not as good, probably, for us to, you know. It's possible to make it a little bit better for everybody to. And break room is smaller, there's a whole other room to work with, first place, and a lot of, not having to play with that for a long time. There's really no way to, especially with a growing crew, to have this as part of the structure that exists. I'm hoping to push something out and create something new that houses everybody and we're civil, civil way.
What you said to me earlier, so it would be, you know, lockers for people, people, you know, they.
Locker room, male, female, so, you know, there is some separations, hopefully that you can get from that.
Changing area type of thing.
Male, female bathroom.
Need laundry.
Laundry facility and a shower.
Right, and shower.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, okay.
As an addition.
Okay.
That's just one thing. Standalone generator would be the next one, this is another thing that we've been trying to get for a long time. We currently have a generator that is mounted on a trailer that was originally used to power a pump station at Wood Creek, get very modern. So that we're trying to get rid of, it's no longer compliant, we would have to replace the propane fuel tank in order to keep that functioning, it's a very, very old generator, they go back to the early 60s, sitting on a trailer that is from the 60s. It's a pretty, you know, old piece of equipment and we can't really use it, so. We're sending it off to auction to get rid of it, opening up the shed that it's sitting in for, to be purpose as another wood shop, just a shop in general to be able to use. And we do need some sort of backup power at the shop in case power does go out, and so I'm proposing $16,000 for a standalone generator. Had one of these priced out a few years ago, and obviously those numbers are no longer, you know, relevant.
This is a working number at least.
So, the original quote that I got a few years ago was roughly $45,000, that's installed, connected to a transfer switch and up and running. So I just had, um, $3,000 extra dollars to maybe get more of today's tech over. So $60,000. Garage doors, which are missing, we have a dinner shop that's aging, I mean, if I could level the whole shop, if we had $2 million, like the town would, you know, pitch our own shop. I'm picking up, we have a lot of the stuff that we have wrong with our shop, and one of the things are the wheels for our overhead garage doors, and hinges on those panels. They're not cheap, we can do it in-house ourselves.
They're heavy-duty.
The doors are heavy.
Wow, I've seen those.
Very, very heavy, and every once in a while, we have a spring break or a motor go down, we'll have to replace those. The wheels, the roller wheels that sit the track, they're expensive, there are a lot of them.
And how old are the tracks, are they?
Each door has been replaced over the years, I would say the oldest one has got to be 35, 40 years old. And the newest one's just probably eight years old.
Okay.
So $10,000 to make our garage doors a little bit more functional and, uh, nice to use. I feel bad for keep going here, I would spend all your money. A new truck, so F-450 truck, Lightning, it's an electric truck, and this would be to replace our F-350. Currently, our F-350 is, I will be putting it up for replacement this coming budget, it's six years old now, so it's a good time to get rid of it. It's currently selling for more used than what we paid for it new, so.
So we could offset.
There's some benefit, so we are offsetting the cost. And to replace that truck new right now will be, I assume, $65,000. So, that 150 Lightning is a first step toward having an electric fleet, and it's worth around $40,000 retail, going through municipal sales, we probably see about 10 to 15% cut on that.
Yeah, and I know, because we're a climate smart community, if, you know, we would be putting in an EV station that also the public could charge as well.
Yes.
And so, there's rebates for that and grants.
There's grants available for electric vehicle infrastructure.
Right.
Purchasing, the rebates for the purchases, so if we do get this vehicle next year, we'd be able to file for a, or apply for a rebate, which is up to $7,500. The infrastructure for charging systems, depending on how many charging systems you put in, they would have to be made for public use as well as municipal use.
Which we would want, you know.
That's offered through grants, so depending on how many you want to implement, is really what determines how much money you give for these grants.
And then we would get some additional points, again, to go towards additional, unres, well, I should say, not, we don't need to match the grants through climate smart program.
Yeah, we start using that, I suppose, wanting to use that money from the recent most goals towards, if we have to cover the upfront costs of a grant. A new dump truck, that's another thing I'm putting up for replacement this coming quarter here. The F-450, it's 2015, and it's about, currently about $80,000 to replace. So whether we want to put that into the budget or use ARPA funds to cover the cost of that. The last one that we got is a 2019, and we have financed that one, so we're just looking at a way to make the purchase, I don't know if it's financed, because the costs are going along, so. New cone shed, so. Behind, where the cannon sits, we have a dilapidated shed that I'm not sure if that was real size to find, or how I ended up on.
I think it was Dr. Allen's garage.
It was Dr. Allen's garage.
But it has, it has outlived its life, I mean, holy cow. It's a river from only siding, there are holes in the siding, I mean, squirrels get in there.
So, it's outlived its use?
Yes.
Okay.
And I would like to build this new cone shed, that would be, you know, something that we could actually walk into and not worry about, you know, having crazy.
Would you have power in there and, you know?
Yeah, we have power, I actually have a concrete floor in there, so it's not just a pile of floors in the ground, so it's permanently placed. And aesthetically pleasing to the person, so. $25,000, I think, possible, doesn't have to be maybe four or so.
Is there any way to combine the cone shed with the bathroom shower facility idea, or like, could?
It all depends on who's designing it.
Okay, I'm just curious about combining those two things.
If possible, I would love to do that, if we could blow the back of the DPW facility and put in a few more bait doors to have a drive-through, we'd open that. We're at capacity with everything we have. Every year, we go through and clean house, try to, you know, reinvent the wheel on where we're going to put stuff to try to buy another square foot of space. So, and I would love to blow the back of the building to $1,015,000, $3,000, if possible, but I know budget constraints.
Well, it's important that we understand, you know, what your needs are, so.
And again, I'm just speaking, I mean, this is my role here, so I have to.
Yeah, of course.
So I think that's it for DPW.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Yep, and that's just facility, not infrastructure.
Yeah, I'm still just speaking, I.
I've got more.
Even more. So I'm going to represent for the village hall needs, as we discussed in our previous meeting and presented an estimate for the window repairs and.
Restoration.
Restoration for $53,000, that's something we do need to act upon. We're trying to get quotes immediately, because we have several windows, we're glazing, and we're fearful windows are going to start falling apart on us, so we really need to act on that. We also are asking for the emergency e-gress windows, we talked about that as two areas, the fire marshal as well as the sheriff's department have recommended that we have secondary means of escape out of the building, at least from this end. The front porch, the tiles, they need to be taken care of so that they don't pop up. That's why we often have a lot of rugs out there, because we're afraid someone's going to hit a tile flying. As well as the wrought iron all through the front, needs to be all restored and taken care of. And we're starting to see some deterioration along the back, that needs to be treated soon before it gets out of hand, as well.
So the railing out here, okay.
On the handicap ramp. As well as the front balcony, those need to be totally restored, as well as the wrought iron there as well.
Yeah, and I think the, I think the last, I'm trying to remember, they said that the, I can't remember who looked at it, but they said that the, oh, it was Wayne Goodman, he said the entire concrete base had to be redone, because it was rotted on the edges, I think, so it wasn't simple, like, we take out the wrought iron, he can patch it, you couldn't. And I think you, you said the same thing, it wouldn't be stable.
Too brave a way exposing where the wrought iron is.
Okay.
You need to set the post for the railing about three inches in from the edge of the concrete, so it won't crack.
So, yeah, they need to.
Also, the basis of the columns, and the front porch are starting to rot.
Yeah.
And those, what's there now was a temporary fix, but that really should be a permanent fix, and that's the issue with high quality work.
Yep, all of the above, absolutely.
And I believe, Bob, at the time, you did get a quote for the front porch, it was around $25,000 to $30,000.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, and adding, again.
For inflation.
Inflation, and we're looking about $35,000 now. The main office rug. I love our rug, no, not.
Not.
The village office in the same light would like the rug replaced, we're not really caring what you put down, we just want the smelly old rug burnt, it's a tripping hazard.
Well, that's what people see when they come in, to see us.
If we could replace the rug in the front with, you know, tile, anything that we can wipe down and be easier.
Oh, just outside, right here.
Yeah. You're welcome to take a tour.
Oh, that's good.
Yes, no, we have earmarked that, I think that has been an earmarked budget item every year for like, nine years, 10 years.
Probably.
HVAC system, we did replace one furnace, went to gas, we still have an oil furnace that is in critical issue. It's, I want to say westing, is that right, Zach, it's westing out, it's leaking oil.
Yeah, steam, steam.
The furnace?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yes, the contacts on the inside are starting to rust out, and we see a conversation with them.
Yep, and it's oil, so we'll just say how bad that is.
Not sustainable.
Correct, and that needs to be replaced, and we have, the furnace still down there, that needs to, as well, needs to go. Air conditioning units, they were earmarked, they're over 20 years old, they need to be replaced as well. So, we've talked to the board about looking at the heat pump or.
Or geothermal.
Geothermal or something.
Yeah, that's what you're seeing.
Something more, it's a bit stable, there's around $50,000 for that.
You know, if you don't put the air conditioning back in, the meetings might be shorter than some of them.
I thought about that.
Good point, and we can all have the handpan.
We can go down from four hours to two and a half. The village hall roofing system, there's a flat roof, my understanding.
Yes, it's rolled, that's called modified digital.
Thank you, there's bubbles and problems been.
Bubble up.
It needs to be worked on, so we need to have that taken care of, that's about $20,000 or less. And then the same thing I've been saying to the village board, I think, since we started with the meetings and trying to bring in the public virtually, we need the village hall room reviewed, audio and visual improvements. We've gotten quotes last year anywhere from $15,000 to $45,000, I think they were somewhere safe in the 20, you know, around 25. We need smart boards, so board can see people, people can be seen, it can be used for many aspects.
Training, all kinds of. Training, all kinds of things.
Anything, it can be presenting projects as well for the board. It just, we're in a current century where this is normal, and we should be able to do more with it. Kid cap chair, that's our little chair that goes down for the legion, it's been used quite a bit. We've gone through the last, what, three months back and forth with repairs on the chair.
Very problematic.
Very problematic. And one of the things is, the chair that, when it was purchased at the time, that all the criteria, weight limits, it's not strong enough anymore. It just can't handle it, they did some restoration to it. Right now, we are functioning. I am worried it won't be functioning.
For how long?
Yeah, it's really how long? So looking at that, we got a recent call for replacing it, it's going to be around fifteen thousand dollars. The village hall exterior painting, I believe it was done prior to my taking office, so coming in, it needs to be done again. We have, especially the front porch area, a lot of the painting is flaking, it's not looking very attractive. You can see it when you're coming up the ramp, there's spots that are popping where the paint is starting to peel away. So that's, and I was informed it was around eighty thousand that was done, does that sound right?
That sounds high.
Is that? So I'm thinking we're probably high.
Let's say fifty, go, maybe fifty, I'm thinking, if, you know, such as they're doing prep work, after we have the repairs done of the porch, and they have to be.
Correct. So in that case, I just spent three hundred thousand village money. I'm going to turn it back to Zach.
So, my next. This would be to include what's outside of the DPW facility. For years, we've been trying to get South Street done. And in turn, it's also paper cans straight, but the rest of our paving, that needs to be done as well. So taking some of the money and applying it for South and Wood Street, and Wood Street most likely should be boxed out and built, which is pretty heavy costs at South Street. You know, a hundred thousand dollars.
Grant.
Grant from.
Senator Bruin.
Yeah. To be applied to this, so two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to finish that. I know that one doesn't come close, but at least two months' table, part of that, I think, to South Street. Yeah, and then chain place, rent place, those are two other roads that still need to be done, still need to figure out what to do with Sutherland and, Sutherland is another biggie. That's one of the worries that we have as well. It's going to be costly to be done, there are some things that need to be figured out beforehand, but that's full on reclamation of the road, curving out through there, a lot of the drainage structure needs to be replaced as well, so it's going to be a heavy cost.
So sort of what we're seeing for South and Wood, we could carry it forward in some fashion for each of the other roads, roughly?
Zach, if you could speak up.
Yep. Random place is going to be coming along soon for some sort of treatment and surface treatments, I wouldn't consider for that road to much longer, as I'm putting, getting there in the middle of the entire road. So there's just the next one that, you know, is going to be pitched out of South, Shane, and, and Sutherland, so. And then RGV streetlights purchasing, so I'm sure you guys have all noticed that a lot of the streetlights are out along South Village, and been, you know, constantly.
Constant.
Yeah, contact, trying to get this sorted out with RGV to Moleskine, so. A while back, RGV proposed that we could purchase back the lights and then also take on the responsibility of maintaining these lights as well. It's a costly thing, and it's, it's maintenance heavy, in which we would also have to have money budgeted for maintenance, and that's not something that we'd be able to do in the house, we don't have the equipment, the trucks, the training, so that would have to be contracted out. There's typically, you know, a hundred, twenty dollars an hour, depending on how many workers are there working these lights, and that's just for labor, not just solely parts, but just another consideration to do with this fund. So we'd have a little more control over our streetlights, so you can honestly get them back up and lit.
Certainly in a more timely manner, yeah. It's been just brutal, yeah.
Like, what we are working on, or getting ready to work on.
Aren't they in the right of way, those street lamps, aren't they in the RGV's railway?
Yes. Well, they're in the public railway, yeah.
Does RGV have a, I mean, the RGV must have an easement though.
Yeah. In order to have their pole there, the light there, I'm sure they have, and some of them have private property as well. Yes.
Okay, to be continued.
Yeah.
Okay.
But there is, just to go back to that, so there are a lot of us that are buying the lights back from RGV. If you ever go onto their always list, the list of municipality that own their lights throughout is growing.
Oh, yeah.
Every month, so they're going to be more than. Yeah, so into what's going on with the rain creek restoration, twenty four rain, we're going to have to do something with the creek that cuts through, I don't remember the address, but it's on the wedge corner of, out of rain.
Bob and South.
I'm sorry, South. So the DPD is there feeling as well, and we should probably get in there and do something with that eventually, which is all aware at this point, so just wanted to place that we can apply it this month.
So. That's a, yep. Well, you know, it's, it's important that we hear, you know, the whole picture here.
Yeah.
I think, you know, they're all.
I didn't, you know, the, the cost of redoing, changing place are going to be economical if you want to put the project in whole. That's not just a simple, it is normal way or surface treatment, that's, the base is in bad shape, we'd have to get core samples from various places to see what we're working with. A lot of the drainage structures are failing right now, so we know for a fact that those are going to have to be replaced, curving separated from the sidewalk, so there are a lot of concrete issues that are going to have to be sorted out as well.
Well, it's taken such a beating with the last two bridge.
Yeah, and, you know, the base settling, everything's moving around, it's just not stable, so that's going to be costly project as well, so it's just a consideration.
I know we've asked nice enough before, do we have any hopes of getting any assistance given that that had to be used for heavy traffic?
Not really.
The short answer is no, but we're going to keep trying.
Yeah, I mean, we're going to keep.
Yeah.
And hoping, just like, you know, the restriping, but, you know, it's, doesn't seem to be going anymore.
Yeah, we're still arguing with them about the restriping out in front of village hall with like the forever left-hand internal lane.
Yeah.
And we just got the, saw the email today, we're just staying with that, so. Yeah, so, well, you know, thanks to both of you, really, for, you know, giving us the picture of what, what your needs are. Yeah, Justin.
Yeah, if I may, thank you very much for putting together this list, and certainly it seems like all these things are very necessary, and I'm looking forward to figuring out a way to address all of them, you know, in a priority order. I am thinking back a little bit to the, and trying to put this in the context of the budgets that we've established, and I had some significant concerns with the budget in the last cycle, because I thought that we did not have enough of a multi-year capital plan. And I think that, you know, at that time, I mentioned the guide from the New York State Comptroller, that specifically says, "Using non-recurring one-shot revenues to support recurring expenditures may appear to offer a solution to establish a balanced budget. However, the strategy is a short-term solution and only temporarily defers the need to address structural budget imbalances." I think that, with the exception of a couple of the items out here, you know, specifically things like the meeting room audio and video improvements, which I think tick a lot of the boxes of addressing COVID challenges and, you know, being expenses that we didn't necessarily anticipate before, I think that a lot of these things, including DPW maintenance, village hall maintenance, road maintenance, a lot of these things, to me, would really fit under the category of recurring expenses that we really should not be looking at in the context of one-shot revenue, we should really put this in a spreadsheet, which we already have for some of those, right? I would really like to see all of that written out so that we can properly account for that in the annual budgets.
Thank you for that. I would like to just chime in a little bit on that, because with the alteration of the usage of the, of the ARPA funds, essentially, what, going forward, we can treat it because of, you know, the cap on the revenue up to ten million, as though it was coming out of a general fund, am I correct?
Correct.
That was what you, Nikon was saying to the municipal use.
Right. Do you want to set up that it's for a salary? Absolutely not. Would I say you're replacing the memory on the village hall roof every, you know, twenty, thirty years? Yeah, but if you have an opportunity to use it and save your village funds, you know, one of the things that we've seen over the years is, we've had a fluctuating budget, we've had to have some huge tax increases, so we've had to do what we can and when we can. Are we trying to level out the board now? You know, try not to keep raising taxes? Yes, that is what we have done. You know? Yeah, how often are you going to completely replace the whole HVAC system? You know, have we been looking at grants for some of these projects and hoping to do them that way?
Yeah, trying.
Absolutely.
That's what we need, grant writer.
Trying to offset, so it's a difficult situation to manage. I mean, as I said, it's not always something, you know, that we need to be able to do. I mean, can we find a combination of some things on my list, Zach's list, the public's list, and try to do a little bit of everything? I would like to think so. There should be a happy meeting.
I think it's important that we see the whole picture, and I think this has really expanded the picture for where the needs are, you know, public side, trustees, everybody weighing in, you know, you're overseeing DPW, you're running village hall here. Zach, you wanted to add something?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that a lot of these reoccurring items are because, you know, the budget can't support it, so I bring it back on a yearly basis, trying to get that done. So I see an opportunity, you know, not to cover a reoccurring general thing, I mean, putting it towards road work, it, you know, really repaid the road in a long time, so. The bathroom's on the shop, it's, it's not something that the budget really is able to support, so. Where I see, you know, the use of two, not necessarily occurring, but recurring out of necessity.
It is a necessity, for sure. No, we appreciate that. I think we've covered a lot of ground, a lot of ideas, it's a workshop, I think maybe, you know, I'd like to kind of be with it, you know, and I'm thinking too, you know, maybe we could just write up all the ideas and get them back out to the board, you know, all the things that came up. I think that'd be a good way to kind of go, kind of consolidate some things, because we have other agenda items to cover. And so, you know, thanks to everybody for the input, and why don't we move on to our bill reserves? Get that.
May I, can you hear us pretty well?
We're all set. Thanks so much, thanks for your input too. Thank you, Zach.
I think we do need you for one thing.
Oh, we need you for one thing, we're not letting you leave.
The question, a question, I'm sorry, Zach, I don't do this.
You should have run a little faster, Zach.
Don't hit my car. I think there was a question I had on the Wood Creek Reserve Fund. It was originally set up as a repair fund. But the repair was specifically limited to replacement of pumps. So is, would a pump be a repair, or is that a capital improvement? It seems like it's sort of a capital improvement.
An improvement would be, I guess, an upgrade to the pumps.
Oh, no, I'm thinking about, is the, is the repair, is it a repair of the pump station, or is it like a capital improvement, like adding a dump to a dump, a truck?
I think the pump station is built out the way it's supposed to be, I don't think you could really improve on it, other than.
So is that, that's a.
I would say it's a repair, a replacement, it's a pump failure that you fixed or replaced on.
It's not in the language though, is it?
It says replacement, specifically for the pumps.
Yeah.
I don't know if that clarifies anything else.
Yeah, yeah, I think this is clarified, we're going to get on it.
Yeah. I mean, now unless we have, you know, a second one, you know.
Right, how many pumps are there?
There are two. One stage.
What's the cost? I'll be ahead of the replacement on.
I believe last time we did it, a few years ago, it was ten thousand dollars.
Oop, can you silence your phone, please? Thanks.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to answer, but we can, thanks.
You're good?
You're good? All right.
Russ. Thanks. Have a good evening. Okay. So here we are with our reserves, and we need to repurpose some of them, create better language, kind of move things forward so we can, you know, properly access the funds as needed.
Correct.
So that's where we are right now.
And again, I gave you guidance I received. I also, these are a little hefty, these are, anybody has it, controllers, reserve funds, and how they can transfer.
Yeah.
So if anybody would like to see these.
It's great reading.
It gives you the type of funds that are out there, and how you might want to move on.
So, how do we dive in? At first.
Yeah. Well, we've got two usable funds. We've got the G two three two P and the G two three T R. The first one is really straightforward, and that is only if you run into a repair to the sewer line that is in our easement by the public. So only time you can use it, so that's easy. And then you got the G two three two R, which is a repair fund for the sewer system. That's pretty self-explanatory, you know, it's move pipes, I guess, move catch basins, those are all repairs.
So those are kind of spoken for, we're good.
We can use them for that.
And that's what we got them for.
But, but I don't think, if I'm right, that that fund has ever been used.
I know they haven't been used since I've been here.
Oh, wow.
I know they were, when I came, I believe it was that year that they were evaluating, I believe trustee Galley and Belusha at that time reviewed all the funds and were looking at the side ends and everything. I've never seen any of the reserve funds used.
I mean, so you could budget repairs over the course of a year, know that you've got this much to start with, and then figure out how much you need to budget to add to it, to cover your sewer, you know, normal annual sewer repairs that you had. Which, you know, you could do in your budget process.
Okay, so to use expenditures for this fund, could this be something, I just want to make sure, yes, we could budget to use it at budget time, but is this, I would assume this also allows us if, let's say we had a major sewer break in a street, not a major catastrophe, like a catastrophe fund, but we could use it for that as well?
Well, that catastrophe fund is really for the.
Side ends, no, what I'm saying.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. But I was just talking about the, that normal, you know, the budgeting process.
Right.
You already got, you got a running starter.
It's not impossible.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you need a public hearing to use those funds, so.
We have to go to public hearing, yeah.
You go to a public hearing on five days' notice. If you, if you don't, sorry?
That was made for you.
If you don't do a public hearing on five days' notice and you use the funds, then they've got to be repaid over the next two fiscal years.
Okay, that's where I was going.
So if you got a, you got a sewer break, you're going to have, if you want to use this money, you're going to have to, I don't know that you want to be waiting for, to publish a public hearing.
Correct, yeah.
You don't want to use it, and you have to realize that if you use it, that's how it's going to have to be repaid. You have to realize that if you use it, that's how it's going to have to be repaid. So you got a catch basin, you know what's going. You could clump it together with a bunch of other repairs and maybe send them all to a public hearing because, you know, it's not going to be a devastating situation. And then have your public hearing and authorize the use. But if you've got a, you've got a real problem on your hands, the affluent's not flowing, then you've got to.
You've got to act.
You have to act, and you have to pay it back.
Could we go back afterwards and do the public hearing and use the fund? We couldn't restore it?
We use the funds and then have a public hearing?
No, use village funds. Do the emergency repair, then have a public hearing to take.
Take it out of general.
Reimburse the village with the repair.
That follow you?
We have the sewer break.
Where would you take the money if you lose it?
You know, Bobby, you're going to have to take it from village funds. You have, there's no other way, or sewer funds. You get the right funds, take it from sewer funds, do the repair. Because you got to do the repair.
Yeah, I think you can do that. I want to run that by.
But I'm thinking afterwards.
Good question.
Afterwards, when the dust settles, do the public hearing, see if you can restore the sewer.
So not use that fund?
No, but see afterwards if it's okay.
Then you replenish.
If you have an agreement, then replenish the.
The general fund or the?
Then pay it back.
Yeah, the general, or sewer fund.
Page from that fund.
That's interesting.
Wherever you got them.
Right. Because if you're in, okay, I'm seeing this this way. If we're to do everything the right way, and it's almost impossible in this scenario because this is going to be difficult, you're going to have to call an emergency meeting because I'm going to say we don't have any lines in the sewer fund that could handle, let's say, a $50,000 repair. I'm going to have the board allow me to move my money before I spend it. So I'm going to have Zach put his finger on the pole. And then we're going to expend money. You see where I'm going now?
Yeah, I see. And then you don't have to pay it back within two years.
Yeah, emergency's going to trigger so many things to be able to do it, expend it right. I'm, I'm going to, there is no way it's going to wait. Zach's going to have to call somebody immediately, that night, whatever. We're going to schedule an emergency meeting, so I'm already going to have a bill that I'm going to have to cover.
So my instinct is to say, if you're, if it's the same cat, but you're skinning it differently, it doesn't seem right, but.
You have no choice in that matter.
Right, but what I'm saying is, you know, if there, if the intention is that it's an emergency and you're spending the money and they want it repaid back in two years, it's a question I don't know the answer to, and I think that's going to.
Well, at that point, I would just use the sewer fund and then look to have a public hearing and reimburse the sewer fund for the use.
I mean, for the reserved portion of the sewer funds. We would have to see if that's okay.
Let's chase that down. So that's an action item. That'd be a good thing to point out.
If I, I just chimed in on that one, too. It seems like part of the goal, in my understanding at least, is to use the reserves, the dedicated reserve funds, that we don't have as much unstructured money in the general sewer fund. So I think that, you know, for me, I don't really, it does appear that there are different ways that we can do this, but I don't see a problem with really using these funds for the intended purpose and then paying them, because that's kind of what they're doing.
Yeah, and that's, that's where my goal is. It's set there, you might not be able to access immediately because you need a public hearing, but you can't pay it on the go there.
Right, circumstantial.
Yeah, it is. It's sex and threat to life, property, who helps?
Yeah, that's, so that's an action item. Okay, next.
So which fund do we want to address first? Do you want to start with general because it seems it's one fund? Not to point the board in the direction.
No, 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 you're, you're our treasurer, you're working on this, too. You and Zach, and everybody's in the pool.
This is one reserve fund that was established, and I believe it's been, is it a capital reserve that you determined or?
I'm still taking notes over here.
Oh, wait, let him finish his notes.
Yeah, I want to.
I'm still a little done.
And so which, what number of fund are you looking at? I'm sorry, just.
A232R.
2R, okay, that's what I saw, okay.
Oh, yeah, A2?
A232R.
Yeah, this thing has been all over the map. Started as a, it's currently designated as a repair reserve fund. There's no indication that there's ever was, ever a resolution saying that it's a repair reserve fund.
Well, listen, we know it was supposed to be repaired.
I mean, these are, bear in mind, these are, are notes by somebody in the margin of minutes, they're handwritten notes in the margin of typewritten minutes, which appear to be somebody's guess that the currently labeled funds are those funds. Right? Just, is that, I mean, is that what?
Yeah, I was, I was unclear as well. I went through some of the same notes and came to the same conclusion that I couldn't tell if it was capital or a reserve account, so it should be clarified on this one.
So even if, if it's a repair reserve fund, even though we know it's not properly constituted as such, it can be whatever you want it to be now. You just have to properly constitute it. The one thing it can't be, even though it's technically not really legally a reserve fund, but it has been designated somehow, some way as a reserve fund, you can't go backwards and say it's unreserved funds.
Right, so we keep it as, we have to keep it as.
Yeah, it has to be reserve funds of some kind. And probably, to be on the safest side of this thing, you can move reserve, unused reserve funds into capital funds, but capital funds have to go into capital funds. So I, my guess is that the safest course is to move, pretend that this is actually a capital fund, and it has to be repurposed to another capital fund.
There, there was an interesting note on this one as well, and I didn't pull the minutes, it wasn't part of the packet, but January 9th, 1990, this is referenced on page 13 of the reserve packet, seems to mention something about a sidewalk fund. So Renee, we've got some sidewalk money here.
It's all over, though. I mean, yeah, I don't know.
I mean, that would be a capital.
Yeah.
It would be a capital, and I'm not sure, it could be either capitals. You could make it a specific capital fund.
What if, can I, can I interject?
Sure.
Oh, keep going, I'm sorry, finish your thought, finish your thought, because I'm just thinking.
Or you could just make it a infrastructure and public improvement.
So a broader scope to enable us, if it's a sidewalk, or if it's the road, or.
Right.
The catch basin, or whatever that would be, infrastructure can.
Right.
Cover a lot of things.
You don't need to have a specific amount.
Cover lights.
You don't need to list the approximate amount, which is that on that improvement. And the only downside is you have to do it, you can put it in by resolution, or you can, you can repurpose it by resolution, but you can't take it out without it being subject to a public, permissive referendum.
Permissive.
Permissive.
Permissive, okay.
Which is the reverse of what you do with a specific capital, which you create it subject to a specific, to a permissive referendum, which is what we do with catastrophic.
Right, right.
So we're talking about $164,000 approximately in that one, at least.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we take inspiration from some of the notes, there may be that, that kind of a capital fund related to sidewalk infrastructure and that kind of thing.
Just make, just enlarge it, sort of, so the scope can large. If we cover a few more things.
Just to throw this out there, can you make it like two reserves?
Sure. Or you could split it. Yeah, yeah.
So I want to throw something out for discussion. So let's say we do that, and we repurpose $164,000 to be, you know, sort of the larger kind of infrastructure. And then we, I use the $100,000 grant we just got from Senator Brooks. So we get $100,000 in a grant, and we have to pay that money upfront. And typically, we bond, and we may still be bonding some stuff, but I guess I'm thinking we could take $100,000 out of this fund, put it to front that grant money, knowing we would get it back and replenish the fund.
Right.
Yay.
That would be the best way to do it.
Yeah. I know Fairport does it. Yeah, Fairport, that's how they've done a lot of their major capital projects.
That would be.
And a number of other municipal.
A beautiful way of using a fund.
Yeah, I'd like to, just as a kind of a side notice, as we're considering those kinds of things, like using grant money and using this to pay upfront, it would be great to have, you know, again, a multi-year capital plan for things like sidewalks and everything that is related to this fund, just that we know where the target level is.
I think, I think we're all in agreement with that. I think, I, I, do you feel that we need that? What about you?
Yes.
Yeah, me too. So I think, I think we've covered that, and I think, you know, we're all on board with that. I think you're absolutely right, and we're all in agreement.
I think the multi-year planning and all that side of the month, the multi-year budgeting and everything, that I'm going to suggest to the board at another night when we're not getting to the end of our meeting and you can't.
Yeah, you covered a lot of ground at NICOM with, there's some, some new guidelines from the Controller's Office, I know, that she wants to share with the board, and more efficient ways of streamlining a lot of things that they recommend.
Yeah, if we could earmark this in a way, you know, absolutely, that's purpose use of reserve funds, because then you're just replenishing the funds.
Right, right. So when he makes them. So in terms of an action item, I mean, I think we should direct Jeff to create that language for the, that fund. How do we go forward with this? What do we do?
I, I haven't heard yet you, you are convinced it should be one fund or two funds?
Well, that's true. That's right.
Can you put, like, when we're talking about sidewalks, I mean, that's different than, is there a, when you say infrastructure, what's all included in that? Or do we need to say street infrastructure? Because if there's a, like, the South Street, we've been trying to get done for a long time, we've had the ADA ramps added to it, and so it got more complicated, and we decided to wait. Is that infrastructure, even though it's mostly road infrastructure?
I think you could name that within.
Yeah, we could give context for what.
You could say road, sidewalk.
What about trees and storms that were, that lights?
Here's how I think of that. If you don't start listing things, you won't have missed one.
Can we use a broad term like infrastructure? I think we've been discussing, or does that leave too much room for interpretation?
I, I think that's a good start. I guess before we get to the legal wording, I would like to see, you know, rather than just making a decision about going ahead with one, I would like to see laid out in a spreadsheet, you know, just a couple of words for each fund, to make sure that we're covering the entire area of the large expenses that we have. Now, just to mention, I think everybody might already know this, but this is the only fund that we have currently under the general fund, as I understand it, and all the rest are divided up under sewers. So, you know, we might want to consider breaking this one out.
Yes. And as soon as, and to give the board an update, I'm waiting for the AUD to hit any moment. It was supposed to be in my desk today from the accountant. Once we get that, I'll have an updated number on fund balance. So at that point, we can, I'm not saying it's what the board wants to do, but we probably should look at it and.
What greater ones?
More towards reserves. That would be a time to do that as well, so.
Like, just getting back to your question, and the, the general word, infrastructure.
Those, you know, that's going to be dependent.
But I like that.
You could ask the controller for an opinion.
Yeah, we could do that. I mean, I.
No, no, I mean, and then they'll give you, I don't know how long it takes.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, you could say, you're whatever, you know, we represent the blank, and we write the letter.
You know what?
Can you, but I, let me just get started. You could do, that's what I, I've seen in the controller's opinions, a capital fund like purchase of green space.
Okay, or purchase of vehicles, just like a general?
Yeah.
Okay, fine.
So I think, I don't think there would be anything wrong with saying for the purchase of infrastructure and other public amenities. And, and public amenities.
You know what I'm going to do, too? Because I know Fairport, really, they're pretty aggressive about this. I'm going to, I'll talk to the mayor, I'll talk to some of the other mayors, too, because I know a lot of them are kind of, you know, working it this way, and, you know, maybe get an idea of the language that they've used, you know, for their, their funds. Like, infrastructure would definitely public restroom.
Right.
Do you know what I mean? Like, put that public amenities, infrastructure.
It's one or the other.
I mean, we do know we have a lot of road, you know, we use CHIPS funding.
This is, this is infrastructure.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at. It's like a huge thing, and do we want that, or do we want it to be delineated a little bit more?
I've, right, yeah, I mean, right now, I'm liking the broader scope. I think it gives us, because we're small, and when we get a need, it's like, wow, it's big. This way, I think it gives us, we're a little more nimble with that type of language to be able to respond to these types of improvements.
Sure.
Whether it's a roof, or whether it's the road, or we need a public restroom, you know, it's all for the public good, you know, it's all something that needs to be addressed at some point, so.
Fairport's budget is astronomical, so they, it would be interesting to see how they think they constitute their reserves.
Yeah, and I'm going to talk to the mayor.
That would be a good.
Yeah, yeah, they've done a lot of work in there, too.
Just one other thought on this. I guess I could see going either way, consolidating or not. I think some of that would depend on how rigorous we are and how diligent we are with the planning. If we've got really good multi-year plans, then we probably don't have to break this up as much. But if we're not going to be as disciplined with the, the planning and saving, then I think that you might want to have more granular categories for the reserves.
And to end, if we were to split it into two, I'd like to see one more infrastructure base, like you were saying, and one more equipment vehicle base. But then my question to Jeff, because, I know, could it be repair, replacement, or purchase in the reserve? Or can?
I don't think so.
You don't think so?
No, I don't think you can buy a repair. I mean, I think you have to, that's one thing you couldn't do, is to say, equipment repair, and that's really what that is. You can't do that.
Well, the reason I say that, so we've seen things like streets with a, it could be a repair that isn't budget friendly, let's say it's like $35,000, because it's over $100,000 machine, so you're not necessarily going to replace it, you would do the repair. But yet, that could be a budget breaker.
I guess, I guess I would say, isn't, don't you have enough of a track record so you can budget for that kind of?
I would say yes and no. Things happen, you know, you do your regular maintenance and things. I think we've had it here with, I think it was the previous week, or one of the other things.
It was the different, I think.
They ended up putting $30,000 in in one year and had no choice.
Well, you could have a public care, you could have a smaller repair reserve fund.
Okay, but you can't combine repair and.
No, no, I would not do that.
I'm trying to cover all in one scope.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think you could do that.
I didn't think so either, but.
I think you'd have to, have to figure out what you, what you wanted in that rainy day repair fund.
Right, yeah.
You know, you take a look at the last five years and say, how much has been a repair that we don't think is a replacement?
I think repair right now is not a bigger concern as much as replacement.
Yeah, we've been repairing very well.
Really, it might, it might make sense to have an infrastructure and public amenities fund and an equipment purchase fund.
Procurement or, yeah.
You're going to have to figure out how to split that between sewer and the, and the general, though, because, you know, they both use the same equipment.
Correct, absolutely. And Zach, you would.
You're not sweeping too many strip.
You would have to fund it in general. If, okay, let's say we budgeted for a vehicle, and it's going to have a general and sewer use. Dedicate, okay, it's going to be used by sewer 25%, 25% come out of the sewer reserve, 75% come out of the general reserve, to combine to buy the whole vehicles.
Well, you could do that with the planning that has gone into when you next have to purchase, what the vehicle's going to be used for.
Correct.
And then you set up your reserve funds. And then you set up your reserve funds to target those replacement dates. So sewer fund might have a repair, I'm sorry, sewer fund might have a repair fund, and an equipment replacement fund.
Right.
And an infrastructure fund.
Right, I think all of them should have.
So, they're each paying their own way, as it were.
Well, it's, and it's, it's definitely easier to track, where you're really tracking with everything.
Correct, I think, first thing you do, establish those ones before you get to specific needs, like saying, you know, exactly like a new DPW building, I think, before you get that dedicated, I think you need to cover all the other areas to make sure we have funds to keep moving on. Because you don't want to track something, okay, it would be great to have a new building, but, you know, the truck just.
So it sounds like you're contemplating, at least in the general fund, a capital Benefit, maybe some other broader amenities, and a capital fund for equipment purchase, and a repair fund for selling equipment repair, I mean, subject to whatever, I'm just making, you know.
Yeah, equipment and infrastructure, village hall and that kind of thing too, right? Would be the general fund too, so.
Yeah.
So is that different than, than we're saying the other one is the public good, is village hall?
This is the repair fund, the other one's the capital fund for the new stuff we're buying, and this one is just for the rug, for the windows.
Yeah, we have the ceiling coming, that's what.
Right, okay, gotcha. Sorry to get.
I know, it's getting.
It's okay.
At least go, they plan the worst first.
Yep.
Yeah.
Days first.
I would say that the capital fund for infrastructure, the infrastructure and public benefit construction, because you're not, what you're trying to distinguish is between a new thing and the repair of an old thing.
Right.
So public benefit construction, the restrooms, new DPW buildings?
Yeah, new sidewalks.
That kind of stuff, okay, just so we're.
The DPW building, of course, that would probably end up being taken half from the sewer.
The sewer, yeah.
So we're going to do the same thing on that side.
Yeah, you're right.
You'd want to mirror.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can mirror that in the sewer fund.
Right, yeah, basically.
I mean, I don't know enough about what the sewer needs to say whether that would be the right funds or not.
So to carve out from, if we can skip to the sewer fund then, is that okay?
Yeah, we, are we, yeah, that's, that's.
So to kind of eliminate a couple of things that we've already talked about, so the.
Justin, can I stop for a minute? Just generally in the sewer funds, there was this misallocation of earnings on the money.
Right, oh, the interest, yeah.
And I think Dorothea, just as Treasurer, has that authority to.
Yep.
To properly allocate the interest on those.
Yeah, no, I, I would do that with the board, talked to our accountant, he couldn't understand why the allocation was being made that way, it might have been one time that's, I'm, I'm just guessing, I have no way of knowing, but the proper allocation is, allocation is the amount of interest equals the amount of.
Right, proportion.
Proportion, so you do the math, and then you subrate it that way, and that's how I'm doing it, and I think I figured it out.
Sorry, I thought we had a good tip as well.
No, that's good, I wasn't asked about that anyway.
Yeah, no, that's already resolved.
Okay, take the pause button off.
No, that's, that's great, okay, so we've got the, let's see, the Pittsburgh Pub Easement Reserve, so we're not talking about that, we'll leave that thirty grand alone, then we've got the, oh, let's see, was G two thirty-two R?
Yeah.
Oh, that was.
We just looked at that.
That's the sewer reserve.
Right, sewer line, okay, great, so we've got that as a repair.
Repair reserve.
So that's already one part of what we're talking about, premiering things from the builder's side. And then we've got G two thirty-two VR.
Right.
Right.
Which is the biggest one by quite a bit, that's almost two hundred fifty, and that one, let's see, Jeff, I think you're, I'm trying to compare the notes that I took with the ones that you did, that was the one that Tim Galley mentioned as possibly being intended for a flush truck.
Yeah, and, and then again, it's just the notes in the, in the margins, but if those notes are accurate, and we have no way of knowing whether or not they are, it started in the water fund.
Yeah.
Where we used to have a water pump.
Right.
There's no clear trail of how it ever got from water to sewer.
Yeah.
In my understanding, there was actually general money in there as well.
In the, in the, that sewer fund?
Yeah.
How?
I recall reading something, yeah, acquisition of highway equipment.
So I, I guess, my, my thought on that, I, I realized that these are margin notes, they're scribbled in, so legally, they might not mean a whole lot, but I was kind of thinking that with the amount that's here, we can kind of take those margin notes as inspiration for where we actually need money, in order to, to buy large equipment like that, and I believe when I asked Zach several months ago, he did say that maybe a flush truck is somewhere around that amount still.
Right, and he was concerned whether there was a need to actually to get one at this time, so I get where you're going, but maybe make it an equipment.
Generalize it a little bit with the language.
Sewer, sewer capital, equipment purchase or something.
Yeah, same idea, yeah.
Yeah, but just, if there's another piece of equipment that.
Yeah, yeah, so.
I don't think, I don't think we need the capital fund for infrastructure and, and public benefit construction, we're not doing that, and we got the sewer system, we've got the pumps today, I don't think we need that, so you might just make it an equipment purchase fund.
Yep, capital.
Yeah, not to go back, the two three two.
Or part, or part.
Yeah.
Equipment. It's the whole sewer system, it's not just lines, right, with two three two R.
I'm sorry, what?
G two three two R, the reserve, it's any part of the sewer repair, isn't it?
Yeah, the sewer repair fund.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
It's a more generalized fund, right?
Yeah, okay.
I understand it.
And you also have the catastrophic.
Right, can be.
That's the new one.
Right.
And that's, that's a specific capital.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
Very good.
Yeah, no, it's good we nail it, you know.
Yeah, I just want to make sure things aren't so tight that, you know, it said pipe, right? What do you mean?
Wood Creek, I probably should have asked when, when Zach was here too, he said that that could be used, that's G two thirty-two WC, about fifty thousand, and we were saying that that was to replace pumps, but Zach was just saying that's about maybe ten K or something?
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's not properly, it was never properly constituted, because it's a specific capital, and we don't know that it was ever made subject to a remiss referendum, so while we have a designated.
Fund.
Funded existence, we can't really use it, because it hasn't been properly purposed.
Looks like it's overfunded.
So, you know, it is a, that, that would be, I mean, it fits sort of within, you would think, unless there are other, are there taxes, Wood Creek taxes that go into a different fund?
No, there, Wood Creek is built separately, because it's outside of the village, so it's coming, I would say then, the separate funds.
Where's that money go?
It commingles in general, but it's built separately, has a separate sewer rate and everything else, so.
But is it, okay, what I'm trying to get at, it's built specifically for the Wood Creek, isn't?
Wood Creek is built separately, yes.
Built separately, but when the money comes in, where it goes into the general fund?
Well, it goes totally into the sewer fund.
Oh, it goes into the sewer fund?
Yes.
I'm wondering if there was some thought when that went in, that it would, the revenue.
Would offset expenses due to the Wood Creek.
Would offset Wood Creek expenses.
Could be, this was established before, I mean.
That would be good to investigate it.
Oh, no, I don't think we'll ever find that out.
But like going forward.
I'm wondering.
Right, this is going forward.
I'm wondering if we want to.
Broaden it?
Fund that Wood Creek.
Sewer lines.
Yeah.
The whole thing.
Right.
And the lift station. Well, no, that's a repair.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, you're not, you're only going to repair.
Oh, we're only going to, okay.
You're only going to repair the lift station, and the, whatever sewer lines there.
So would that be a repair on sewer lines, or would it be a repair reserve?
Yeah, sewer repair fund, you already have a, what I was getting at, is you already have a sewer repair fund.
Right.
And, should, but should there be a separate?
For Wood Creek?
Sewer repair fund for Wood Creek?
I would argue, yes.
I think so as well.
It'd be more straightforward.
I just, I feel like we have a, a real responsibility to the Wood Creek taxpayers, and I like the idea that, you know, it was constituted separately, that seems like very, I'd love to keep a separate, I think that we've got not only the pumps, but we're also talking about a generator that might still be there.
The generator.
Yeah, the generator, so you're right.
Right.
So, the question is, though, are village, I mean, like, DPW, the other equipment that might be used, flush truck, that gets used for Wood Creek as well?
Yeah.
The flush truck, I was speaking to Zach about it, it's maybe used three, four times in a year.
You really have to figure out how much would be correct.
First of all?
To, to, well, how much would be appropriate to contribute to a Wood Creek repair reserve, and how much should go into the general fund?
I would, I guess the best way to do that would look at the revenue comparison to the sewer other areas, but then, I'm going to throw another glitch in there because it's.
Can I stop for a minute?
No.
My point was not, was that it might not be appropriate to put all of the Wood Creek tax money into a Wood Creek repair fund.
Yes.
Yeah, so we, well, we have to determine what, how it would break out, that's an action item, then, you know, that maybe you could help us chase that down.
I'd have to look at the recent bill.
Sure.
See the percentage of the total revenue cost, how much is coming from Wood Creek. The other thing glitch in there, and I don't, this is the most recent acquisition, where we're billing out, remember, we used to get from the town, the minor amount, now we're billing for the usage, or was it high street, those, you know, what I'm referring to?
Yeah, yeah.
Those right now are billing and going through the, just village wide, they're not, I don't believe they're under the Wood Creek.
But that's, that's, there's, there was never any infrastructure.
Involved?
But specifically devoted.
Okay.
To those.
Okay, all right, I just want to make sure, you know, we don't have this other alien hanging out that we're not addressing as well.
I think the work for that is, is done out of the, like, the rest of the village stock.
Okay, right, that's one, I just want to, I'm just crossing my brain out, because it's really quick, so I got to read it fast.
Okay, so your action item then is to figure out.
I'll figure out that percentage between the revenues.
See kind of where we're going, to give us some benchmarks.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, we've already got, how much was in that fund?
Fifty-two K, sort of.
Fifty, yeah, almost fifty-three thousand.
Yeah, 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 about fifty-three.
Yeah, okay. And then the next, we sort of talked about all the rest, right?
Yeah.
Thanks, Paul.
So the question's really going to be for G two three two VR, what goes into a repair reserve, and what goes into an equipment purchase? Do we have any infrastructure purchase? I mean, we replaced the whole sewer system.
Yikes.
I think that's covered underneath catastrophic.
Catastrophic, catastrophic, we set that up.
Yeah.
That's only enough for one site.
Yeah.
But if you have anything more than that, we're getting FEMA. We're down a different path.
Well, we could. Why can't you make an equipment infrastructure?
Yeah, I would do equipment, definitely needs to put that, because if you do go to replace the flush truck, you're going to have to number, and any percentage for doing it appropriately, any village vehicle needed, should have a portion going to sewer, so we can come out of there as well, so.
Yeah, we've already got those numbers in the spreadsheet, it's pretty well defined, so we should be able to see.
We can pull that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, both funds use the equipment, that's the bottom line.
Okay, so, we're kind of pulling this together, we feel like we're getting some direction?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, anything else to add? Because the hour's getting late, too.
My, my only question is on this, this capital reserve for the sewer, whether or not we do have any infrastructure purchases, as opposed to repairs.
Would that be?
Catch basins, I know that.
Would that be generator?
What, what generator?
I know we had Wood Creek generator.
There's a generator.
We need a gener, isn't, isn't there still a generator needed or something?
Yeah.
That's what I was asking.
There's a pump failure.
Yeah, so we would need.
Is that the one that Zach talked about?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so that one could.
Oh, no, not that generator, sorry.
Not the one tonight?
No, the one tonight, no, sorry, I didn't mean that.
Is there another sewer generator?
That's a good question, I, I'm going to.
It was taken from Wood Creek.
That's right.
And that's, we played, a new one was purchased, and that was the old one.
Right.
So we kept it for a backup in case there was an emergency.
But is there another area in the village that we have another off-site generator, or another generator to pump?
Let's find out.
Lily, Lily, I thought that one, that one was taken, and that's what DPW is using.
Right.
Oh, and that's aged out, that's what he was talking about.
So this is the one who's.
Yes, he wants, that's aged out.
But that, that's a generator that probably, why do they need that generator?
They need it for running DPW and other facilities and.
So a part of that should be allocated to.
To the sewer, yes, absolutely.
And wouldn't, isn't a generator equipment?
Yes, it is, that's where I was going.
But, so the question remains, is there infrastructure that need, that could be purchased, rather than, that could, that would be, should be categorized as a purchase instead of a repair?
Absolutely.
To the, so I don't really answer that question.
I, I think there should be a, a capital reserve fund in the sewer fund, is that what you're asking, or?
Yeah, but I'm wondering, I'm asking what that should be titled, equipment and infrastructure, or just equipment?
Well, if we do, well, it's sort of belt and suspenders.
That was my, my thought.
So the infrastructure, I mean, are you talking about, like, we, we just spent, what was it, twenty grand on manhole coverage or something, didn't we?
Yeah, but we had to.
Did that repair, did that replace?
Was a replacement.
You're right.
Yeah, but, but think about it, you're replacing a truck.
That's right, so, yeah, let's.
Okay, we're going to put it.
Okay, okay.
Did somebody have notes of what we just decided?
Yeah, the computer.
That could circulate it, I mean, circulate, I mean, I have my notes that I could.
Let's put together these action items.
That I could put it.
Yeah, I have a basic understanding what I think we're trying to accomplish.
Put it in one spot, run by the board again before we start.
Start.
Right.
Slazin'. Okay.
Yes, go so. Take one, get a drink. Find a friend, give them one.
Okay, so we're, that's from, okay, so yeah, this is what Jeff, Jeff was, uh.
That's the next one.
I'm not, I'm not accepting service.
Yep, so now we're on the video virtual attendance in a local law. And, you know, this, the genesis of this was really that, you know, the man, the executive order has been repealed.
Yep.
So it's a little different than that. I mean
Well, that's true. You're right, yeah. You, I'm, I'm deferring to you.
So the old public officer's law provision, provided for video conferencing, provided that there was video conferencing. But in addition to that, the public was permitted to appear at any place where any member was. So the legislative response to the pandemic was to allow for video conferencing for everyone with no public having the right to be present. Then the legislature decided they didn't want that, knowing that there was a state of emergency and the governor could, could keep doing the executive orders allowing for video conferencing. Legislative response, not, not a response. The legislature, further reviewing the situation, enacted a new open meetings law provision regarding video conferencing. And that is that there has to be three, sorry, has to be, for our cases, it's always three. Has to be a quorum of the members present at one location where the public can attend. Or there can be three separate locations where the public can attend. For the other members who are not part of that quorum, they can attend for extraordinary reasons. You know, you're out of town on a business trip, you want to attend a meeting. You've got an illness prevent you from being at Village Hall, you want to attend the meeting.
So an example of that would be like, you have COVID.
Yeah.
Type of thing, so it's still kind of affected by that. Okay.
There's a, you know, there's a list of the extraordinary circumstances.
So being out of town for a work trip is
Yeah, I would think that, yeah.
Okay.
That fits because
Would you repeat that, what you just said? What you said, right? Can you repeat that?
Sorry. He said, I clarified that being out of town for, on a work trip is considered extraordinary circumstances. So if you were on a business trip and we had a quorum, the way, the way I understand it, we have a quorum, three people are here at Village Hall, I'm out of town for a business trip and I'm available, I could attend in that case virtually.
Yeah.
And I don't need to open up my hotel room.
No, no, I would say the extraordinary circumstances are that you're out of town.
Okay, so that's
So why is that extraordinary?
Because you're out of town.
That's fine.
She's not physically in this location.
She's not, she's not here.
That's, that's the word that's throwing me.
Right, I'm, I was surprised to hear that too. That's what I'm saying. I understand the sickness clause.
I mean, that's, that's my interpretation. Well, let's read it.
But extraordinary to me, means above the really exceptional reason.
Yeah, right.
You're in the, you know, you're in the hospital and, you know, you can't, it's a vet. To me, that's what it speaks to. You're an elected official. Your job is to make yourself available on the schedule that is going to set up by the board and that is your responsibility. So if one of us is away for vacation or something, you need to own that and say, I can't be there because of but, you know, to be dialing in on a regular basis because I don't hear anything or see anything that says, yes, you can do that twice in a year, but you can't do it every single meeting. So I think that's the part that needs to be clarified for me. In other words, somebody could permanently
Permanently phone our
Every single meeting.
Yeah, no.
Be dialing it in, you know, and then what are you doing?
I thought they put the language
Or any other significant or unexpected factor. So maybe you have like a family emergency that takes
I think it's like a one timer.
Yeah, I know what you're saying. I get that.
Versus
Extraordinary in some way. Or an event which precludes the member's physical attendance at such a meeting, like you're stuck at the
So wrong.
Yes, you know, that kind of
Where are you reading that?
Then we would have to sit down and Page two, in spite of three, and how critical is this?
Yeah, so
I don't know, I'm just saying
Exact language from the statute. Unable physically present due to extraordinary circumstances has stepped forth in the public body's adopted meeting procedures. So you have to adopt meeting procedures as well, which include disability, illness, caregiving responsibilities, or any other significant or unexpected factor or event which precludes the member's physical attendance at such meetings. So you tell me what is an unexpected factor or other significant factor. Tell me what those mean. For me, it means I'm unexpectedly out of town. I didn't know this was going to be there, so I'm, I'm calling in. Now, you know, I mean, I was only an example. I don't, I don't care one way or the other, what the board decides, but I mean, it's really vague language.
Yeah.
When you read
If you have a sick child, you have to stay at home.
It's pretty clear.
And you still could participate.
That's pretty clear. You're a caregiver.
Yeah. Yeah, caregiver.
You know, you're
And participating does that you get to, you get a vote. That's what participate means, correct?
Yeah, yeah, it's a full participation.
Because we already have a
As long as it's a quorum.
Yeah.
You get
Full.
Participate.
Yeah.
Remember, the important, it's not only important that you vote, it's the dialogue and interaction between the board members making points
Right.
That is extremely important to this process.
Yeah.
It's not just the end thing, the vote.
Right.
It's the whole
Public deliberation, discussion.
Well, you hear that, but it's also listening and being part of
Yeah, the decision-making process.
The decision-making process.
Yeah.
There's so much to this that I think, I feel personally, needs to be addressed. As you said, it's very vague. So let us say, an individual, a board member is out of town. How do you know that that when they are deliberating or the, whatever it is that, you know, we're discussing, that there isn't anyone else in the room that is also doing sidebars or giving them information? You know what I mean? It's not really open anywhere.
It's no different than being
But I mean, it doesn't happen here.
But it's no different than happening here, having your phone out, having your table open, having whatever it is you use.
Happen.
And getting, and getting input.
That's supposed to.
Yeah, well, not supposed to, but it's no, no different.
That's true. We have talked about that though in meetings, also the fact that people are texting or typing back and forth. And we, we decided as a board that it was not acceptable, so.
Or should be. So everybody's making notes on their tablets or whatever they're doing. And how do you, how do you say, how do you, how do you police what they're actually doing on their device?
The thing.
Yeah, right, and that's, and that's the same principle by which you would say, I, I, you know, it's, it's not, it's an honor system, really. And if there is some doubt and there is a challenge to that decision, then a judge would decide whether that was reasonable.
Be a seventy-eight? Yeah, okay. Part of this to me, to me, is, is this board deciding how we want to appear to the public as far as our accessibility, our transparency and honoring the open, the spirit of the open meetings law, the way things have functioned as a board for how many years? They've always been in absence for one reason or another. And this is life. In broken, things happen. And we accept it and we've been able to operate that way. I, so I really, there would be a lot that I'd wish to discuss as a board before adopting anything that was different other than the open meetings law that we have functioned with for the past
Yeah, but that open meetings law that we functioned with is gone.
It's not there.
Gone.
They removed the, the open meetings law requirement? What are you talking about? What do you mean?
I mean, the open meetings law always had a video conferencing component.
Yes, but there was, there was very specific, you couldn't vote, I thought.
No, 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 you could always vote.
You just had to open
During the pandemic you're talking about?
It's just that people had to be able to be wherever you were. You had to open it up to the public. So if you were taking a video conference from your daughter's house,
Yes.
you would have to open that up in the previous, before COVID.
Yeah.
You would have to open it up so that anybody could
Yes, oh, that's right. Yes, I understand that. Yes, you have to be accessible to the public.
Yeah.
And have to be out on the porch wherever.
Yeah, it's always been that you could vote.
I mean, I don't see, I, I hear what you're saying, but I also think, you know, we're maybe not in a pandemic, but there's still, you know, we still have issues where people get COVID, but they don't really have symptoms, but they shouldn't come in and they want to be at home. You know, we're still dealing with people, illness, that we just had two people out of DPW. You know, it was that kind of circumstance as well, so.
Is it like six days of be limited to how many a year you can do?
No, we pay, with this, when it's
No, what I mean for this
I don't know, well, we have our No, I understand, but that's part of our discussion. You know, right now, what we're doing, just so everybody's clear, we're in a workshop and this is a discussion.
Okay.
So we're discussing.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's getting late and we're going to have a hard stop at nine.
So
Like if you're, when it says public, to me, it doesn't mean the public in Washington DC. It means our, our public, that if you, you, it says you have to be accessible to the public.
No, that's, no, that's the old law.
That's
Okay, and it could be Washington DC. We did have this happen prior to the pandemic. We did have a board member out of town.
Yes.
He appeared in a public space. So he was accessible to the public, so he could participate and vote to be in the meeting. So that was a lot. It didn't have to be
Isle public, no, any public.
Any public.
Does any member of the public can come into any of our meetings?
Anybody from Washington DC can come in.
Not just our residents.
Right. You can play it on Zoom right now when you want to.
So this is, so as I said, the board will whoever, whatever the board wants. But this is the legislature's way of trying to accommodate the new century that we're living in. Basically, you know, they're, they're still, they still want people accountable. So they want the public to be there with at least three people. And whatever you decide to do about, I mean, their solution was, we've got all this technology. Let's, let's use it to make it convenient for public servants.
And if we don't
That's my interpretation.
If we don't adopt a policy ourselves, that this is the, like, this
You can't, you cannot adopt this. You must adopt a policy.
Yeah. That's what I was going to ask. So we are
That's what we're looking at.
We have to adopt a policy of our own.
If you adopt, all right, maybe I left out one piece.
Okay.
In order to do all of this, any of this, you must adopt a local law allowing it to happen.
Yeah, okay.
But you can't just adopt a local law. If you adopt a local law, you must adopt policies.
Right. It's two edges.
So we can't do nothing.
You can do nothing.
Oh, and we, and this would be this ambiguous link.
No, if you did nothing, then nobody appears hurtful.
Okay, gotcha.
Then everybody has to be here no matter what, and even if they have symptoms of COVID, then they're just home or whatever, for caretaking, whatever it is.
This was the default, you did nothing. There is no default.
So this, this was basically just, as you're saying, just responding to the fact that it's, things have changed.
Changed, yeah.
You know, things have simply changed.
So, I mean, it's totally, the board's calling. You don't have to do a thing. The subsidiary boards can do whatever they want.
Yeah, they can, they can take
They can adopt that resolution and do what they want.
Yeah.
You can adopt it for all the boards, your own board. You do whatever you want. Don't have to adopt anything.
Well, I mean, we do have people on other boards that, you know, have some health issues, yeah.
Well, I know, but that's up to those boards.
No, I understand, but if we adopted it, for all boards, it would cover that too, but
Or they can adopt it themselves.
Yes, that was what he just said.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think he's considering adopting it themselves.
Yeah. Okay, so what's the action item? We all kind of want to be with this and think it through? And do we want to bring it back on the next agenda? Where are we going with this?
Because we need to get specific on particularly this on page two, number three.
I mean, we have from the, from the, maybe out of government, you have a resolution and policy, foreign policy that we would send out, you guys could look at.
Yeah, why don't we take a look? Because I think that's at least a good starting point, you know, something that they
And you can tweak it now where you, where you want, I would think to the only thing you can't do is, is change the wording of the legislation.
Right.
And certainly where it's vague, you could
Be more specific.
Get a little more specific.
Okay.
If I may just jump in here, currently I am not in favor of moving ahead with, with adopting a local law and a policy for our board. I'm a big fan of remote meetings. I'm on them every single day for work. And I think that they're, they're very useful devices. I think that we have an opportunity to kind of take a step back from some of the COVID restrictions and be in front of the public. And I think there are a lot of benefits to public engagement. I would like to try that out for a while. And I also wanted to just indicate that we, we also have somewhat of a unique circumstance. We, we talked about the very open-ended language about the reason that people may not attend. I don't think that we've had, and correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think that we've had all the members of our board in person since June or so. And it's, you know, a lot of us have that vacation time, but I, I think that we're not in a good position to say that we can just accept the ambiguity of these open regulations about, you know, what the reasons are for, for remote attendance. I'd like to settle this out. I'd like to see all of us in person here for a while and we can settle some of those
Well, we still can have the material sent to the entire board for consideration. I mean, I think, I, I think that doesn't hurt a damn thing. I mean, we're looking at this and we're talking about it and, you know, I, I would like that to happen. I just think that just even as a practical matter, to see, you know, the policy, you know, all of that, so, you know.
And then we would decide whether we want to
Yeah, we can
Take it to public hearing or not.
Yeah, we can, you know, figure it out or amend it or come up with our own.
You have, you really have to finalize those policies.
First.
Before you
Right. That's why he would send out the samples of the policies, so we could at least have a starting point. And we're almost to nine o'clock, so I think that's where we're
Dorothea's got them. You can send them on the
Yeah, if you can just, yeah, send them out to everybody so we can, you know, take, take a look at that. That I think would help everybody. Okay, anything else here on this, these items specifically? Otherwise, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I will second. We'll call trustee Suster. Trustee Lanfair.
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair.
Aye.
Dana Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passed. Good night, all.
Thanks, everybody. Lots of good ideas and input.